Good morning, everyone. We're still in compliance. I look out at all of you. It's wonderful. We're six feet apart and our council chooses or not chooses to wear their masks, but to breathe, I smother in my mask, which I do out of respect for everybody and hopefully everybody always wears their mask. But here we are, measured six feet apart, so those who wish to take them off, please. Anyway, the October 7th, 2020 meeting of the City Council called to order. This meeting has been properly noticed and posted in compliance with the open meeting law. These proceedings are being video recorded as well as presented live on KCLV, cable channel two, and are closed captioned for hearing impaired viewers, made possible through the underwriting from Homie. Please note, customers, Sentrylink, and Cox Communications may view this program in high definition on channel 1002 and in standard definition on channel two. You may also watch this meeting live on Apple TV, Roku, Amazon Fire TV, on the Go Vegas app. The City Council meeting, as well as all other KCLV programming, may be viewed on the internet at www.kclv.tv/live. The proceedings will be rebroadcast on KCLV, channel two, and the web, the Wednesday of the meeting at 8:00 PM, also on Friday at 4:00 AM, Saturday at 7:00 PM, Sunday at 7:00 AM, and the following Monday at 5:00 PM. This building is protected by state-of-the-art fire detection and suppression sprinkler systems. If alarms should activate during today's meeting, please evacuate using the exits at the back of the chambers, go out to the mezzanine, proceed out the double door to the terrace, and go down the back staircase. For anyone who has difficulty with stairs, please check with one of our marshals or fire official for assistance. Once outside, assemble on the northeast corner across the street from City Hall at Lewis and First Streets. Employees wearing safety vests or our city marshals will inform you when it's safe to re-enter the building. For public comment-related items on the agenda, citizen participation and public hearing items, we have available a speaker card, which you may complete and submit to our city clerk up front. Cards are available in the clerk's office at the rear of these chambers, and if you do not submit a card, it does not prevent you from speaking under public comments, citizen participation, or specified public hearing items. If anyone's present today who has need for hearing impaired equipment, please also come to our city clerk up front. Please note, if you parked in the parking garage across the street, a self-validation machine is located in the foyer between the City Council chambers and the security desk you walk through to enter chambers. You must have your ticket with you to use the machine, but if you do not, please see security personnel when exiting for a validation coupon. Before we proceed with the agenda, would everyone please rise for the invocation given once again by our wonderful Reverend Bonnie Polly Christ Episcopal Church and remain standing for our pledge? Good morning.
Morning.
You're doing well, huh?
Doing good.
Good.
Let us pray. Oh, great and holy love, thank you for living and loving in us and through us. May all that we do flow from our deep connection with you and all beings. Help us become a community that vulnerably shares each other's burdens and the weight of glory. Listen to our hearts' longings for the healing of our world. And knowing you and hearing us better than we are speaking, we offer these prayers in all the holy names of God. Amen.
Okay. Agenda item five. Public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to the matters on the agenda for action. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed may be limited. All comments made will be cross-referenced to those specific items. If anyone submitted a speaker card or wishes to speak under this portion of the agenda, please come to the podium, state your name for the record. It's your opportunity to address the council, but council will not engage or respond in dialogue. We'll set the time at one minute. Good morning.
Good morning, Mayor. Madam Mayor, I don't see the item on the agenda. I haven't heard anything about the Huntbridge Theater in the last six months. Could there be an update someday? Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I'm going to ask at this point if anyone else wishes to make a comment. Please do come forward, but I'd like to ask Ms. Holmes, our city clerk, to explain how ecomments are going to work and read any public comments on the public.
Thank you, Mayor. Luana Holmes, city clerk, for the record. Viewers can follow along with the meeting by watching our live stream on KCLV, channel two, on YouTube, or by accessing our Meetings and Agendas page on the city's website at LasVegas primegov.com forward slash portal forward slash search. Any and all persons are encouraged to send comments and written objections electronically prior to the meeting via email to meetingcomments@lasvegasnevada.gov. Emails received up to an hour before the meeting will be considered public record, read during the meeting, and included in the backup. Comments can also be submitted via the city's website during the meeting at www.lasvegasnevada.gov/councilcomment. All comments received during the meeting will be considered public record, read during the item, and included in the backup. Late emails and comments received on an item after action has been taken will not be read, but will be included in the backup. A time limit may be imposed on the comments read for the record as is standard practice when comments are made in person. Thank you.
Thank you. And any public comments at this time?
No, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to be heard, please come forward, state your name for the record. And I ask too, if you have a very unusual spelling, if you would clarify it for our clerk. Okay, we will move on to agenda item six. Business item for possible action. Any items from the 9:00 AM session that the council staff and/or applicant wish to be stricken table withdrawn or held in abeyance to a future meeting may be brought forward and acted upon at this time. Mayor Protem Anthony, may I have that information?
Thank you, Mayor. I have two items. Item number 58, variance 78681, public hearing applicant, Colita Residential, owner Centennial, owner South LLC on Skypoint Drive. The applicant has asked that item be withdrawn without prejudice. And then item number 61, a report from Scott Adams, city manager, on emerging issues. City manager has asked that be stricken, and that is my motion.
Thank you very much. There's a motion, and I'd like you all to vote, please, and post. Thank you. The motion carries. We'll move on to agenda item six, seven here, for possible action to approve the final minutes by reference to the September 2nd, 2020 regular City Council meeting. Mayor Protem Anthony, may I have a motion?
I'll move for approval of the minutes.
Thank you very much. It's a motion to approve minutes. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries. And we are going to be pulling forward agenda item 45. Okay. Discussion for possible action regarding the employment contract with Jorge Cervantes, who was selected as city manager on September 2nd, 2020 by the City Council. $250,000 plus benefits from the general fund. And good morning, Mr. Zamora.
Good morning, Mayor, Council, for the record. Acting Director of Human Resources, Vince Zamora. I'm very pleased to move forward item number 45, which is a discussion item for the possible action regarding the employment contract with Jorge Cervantes as our next city manager, who you approved on September 2nd, 2020.
So at this point, I would like to ask for a motion, if I could, please. Mayor Protem, please.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I will make a motion to approve the employment contract for Jorge Cervantes as the new city manager for the city of Las Vegas.
Thank you very much. There's motion on the floor. Please vote and please post. And before we move a little bit forward on this, Mr. Zamora, I want to thank you first of all for the excellence and manner in which you conducted this election, and we're just, we have wonderful candidates, but we are so delighted. Longtime Jorge Cervantes. I think I've asked you so many years back, put your name in, put your name in, put your name in. You've not aged one bit, so I'm sure, and no gray hairs, but I just, I want to congratulate you and thank you for taking this on. You have deep, deep, deep steps to follow in, and we've had a wonderful time with Scott Adams taking us through and out of that mess that we were in before. We seem to go from one problem to another. This one, I'm not sure if Mr. Adams is running for it because he's had so many times, but it was sort of like when my husband swore me in, we were in the recession. So I thought, what's he scared? Has he had enough? So I just wanted to know, well-planned, Mr. Adams, for your retirement. And Jorge, I just, I know we all want to say something, and so I'll turn first to Councilwoman, and then I'm coming down.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and I just want to congratulate you as being the first Latino. I think it being Hispanic Heritage Month, and I think it's super exciting to see you elevated to this position, not just to work for, you know, Latinos and Hispanics, but the entire community, but it's always so helpful when we see ourselves in leadership positions. So congratulations, Jorge. I know you are coming on board during a very trying time, but I know you have the experience and the grit to get us through it, so congrats.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you. Councilman Knutson.
Thank you, and Mr. Cervantes, I just want to say that I'm grateful for the opportunity. I remember 10 years ago sitting down with lunch with you over at Fremont East, and I have a profound respect for government and the function of government, and as, at that point, you were Deputy Public Works Director, and following lunch, you were Public Works Director, and you understand government better than anybody else and the function of what we can do. So I'm really excited about your opportunities here and our opportunities working with you. And to you and your family, congratulations. I'm super excited for you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you. Councilwoman Fiori.
Thank you. So, Mr. Cervantes, I'm looking very forward to working with you as our new city manager. Your demeanor, your character, I think, I think it's going to be an amazing adjustment, and I'm very, very honored to have voted for you for this position.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. Jorge Felice, that is, it's great that you are taken on this position. You know, your reputation preceded you before I came in office, and everybody that I've spoken to inside the building, outside the building, has had nothing but warm things to say about you from a personal level as well as from a professional level, and I think that's pretty hard to accomplish sometimes because, you know, you have to make some tough decisions, and I look forward to working with you. We have a lot of things going on, as you know, as a city and our ward, so I think we're going to have a lot of fun, but the work continues. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Seaman.
Thank you. I look forward to working with you, Jorge. As you know, we have very pressing issues in Ward Two with Badlands, and I look forward to meeting with you and getting your perspective and your help on possibly resolving some of the issues that we have, so congratulations.
Thank you, Councilwoman.
Thank you, and before the mayor swears in, I just want to, Jorge, I just want to congratulate you. It's been great working with you for the last 10 years in your old position, and congratulation on being the city manager. And the one thing I want to say is, the reason I like you so much is because you remind me of a cop. Because when I ask you a question, or when I ask for your opinion, you just give it to me. You don't go around in circles, you don't pontificate, you don't hyperbole, you just give me the facts, man, and that's what I really appreciate about, about you. Thank you very much. So continue to have that personality, because I think it's going to fit very well here in the city of Las Vegas. So congratulations. Mayor, it's all yours.
Thank you very much. This is such an honor, and we're so excited, and so our city clerk has said that I can have the honor of swearing you in. So here we go. Do you solemn, please raise your right hand. That's most important, please. Do you solemnly swear that you will support, protect, and defend the Constitution and Government of the United States and the Constitution and Government of the State of Nevada against all enemies, whether domestic or foreign, and that you will bear true faith, allegiance, and loyalty to the same, any ordinance, resolution, or law of any state notwithstanding, and that you will faithfully perform the duties of the position of city manager, which you will enter on November 15th, 2020. So help me God.
I do.
Yes. Congratulations. Oh, my God. There's a P, please. Look, 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 look. It's awesome.
Well, Mayor, Council, I just want to say thank you for your confidence and your support. You know, I can assure you that our 2,600 employees plus myself stand ready to continue to serve our community to the best of our ability, and I really look forward to working with each and every one of you, both individually and collectively, to continue to move our city parties forward. So thank you for this honor.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, is Mr. Cervantes's wife in the audience? Can we say hi to her? Come, come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning. Well, congratulations, and you have a beautiful wife.
Thank you.
Mr. Cervantes.
Proud of him.
And they have a college-age son in Tulsa, right?
Well, he graduated, and he works there as an athletic trainer.
Oh, right. I told you that, on the football team. We know that team. Congratulations. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Mayor Protem, would you keep going?
Absolutely. Let me get my agenda out here. All right, we are on the consent agenda, so.
We're, we're pulling item 44 forward.
Oh, okay, we're pulling, okay. Item 44, discussion for possible action regarding the ratification of Vincent Zamora as a Director of Human Resources for the city of Las Vegas. So Vince, you're going to, or our city manager, Scott, go right ahead.
Good morning. Scott Adams, city manager. This is a distinct pleasure of mine, and let me just say at the outset, this is not just my recommendation, it's something I've consulted with Jorge on, and it is our joint recommendation, so I bring before you the joint recommendation of not only myself, but your, your just newly sworn-in city manager, to ask your ratification of our current Acting Director of Human Resources. He has, over the past year, been responsible for leading the day-to-day activities of our HR department. He's done a lot in the last year. I mean, as, as we've all noted, this has been an incredible year, and during this past year, he's worked with our leadership on collective bargaining negotiations, and a number of those have reached success. He's worked on executive recruitments, and most recently, the employee employer matters related to COVID-19, and that has just been a myriad of things that's been thrown at him in terms of having to respond to issues related to the pandemic that we're in now. Vince joined us back in 2010 as an HR administrator, and then was subsequently recruited from the city by another public agency, the Water District. Thought the grass was greener on the other side of the fence, but changed his mind and came back, and he soon realized his passion for this city and was promoted to manager and then to Deputy Director of HR. He started his HR career as a personnel clerk. He worked his way up through positions of manager, director of HR in the public sector, and then he was a vice president of HR in the private sector. He's worked for such companies as Cigna, Sierra Health Services, the city of North Las Vegas, and Focus Property Group. Vince has been a resident of the city since 1994 for 26 years. He's served on the Board of Directors for the Southern Nevada Area Health Education Center and the Make-A-Wish Foundation of Southern Nevada. He and his wife have two children, so it is our distinct pleasure to present our recommendation for ratification as your HR Director, Vince Zamora.
Before us then, as agenda item 44, as Mayor Protem read, discussion for possible action regarding the ratification of Vincent Zamora as Director of Human Resources, $154,000 plus benefits, general fund. So I'm going to move forward and make that recommendation. Would ask you to vote, please. And please post. And we congratulate you unanimously.
Thank you, Mayor, Councilmembers. I really appreciate the confidence you've placed in me for this position. I'm really looking forward to it. I'd also like to thank the CMO team, as well as the directors, particularly Scott Jorge, as well as my boss, Gary Ameling. I'd also like to thank the HR team. You have the best HR team in the state. This is a group of professionals that work every day to service the best customers in the state, and those are our employees. So I'm very proud to lead that particular team. Most of them are here, so thank you guys very much.
Could you all stand up, please? Vince's team, thank you. Look, look.
I'd also like to say hello to my wife, Tina, who's watching on KCLV TV. Thank you, David, as well as to my, my mom and my sister, who are back in Albuquerque watching as well. Hi, Mom.
Hi, Mom. Hi, sis. Congratulations.
Thank you.
I mean, the genes run very strong coming from you, Mom. We know that. It all starts at the beginning, so we're very grateful and proud. And the formal swearing in will take place?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
Yes.
Is the public invited? No. Okay. Except for the close public. Anyway, congratulations. We're delighted and look forward to years ahead.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, we're on to eight. All right. Items number eight through 42 on the consent agenda are considered to be routine and recommended for approval by their departments and may be enacted in one motion. Note that the record should reflect my extension, number 19, because it pertains to marijuana-related industry and one of my sons involved in that business. I'll be voting on all other items. And Councilwoman Seaman, I understand you wish to make a comment on agenda item nine.
I'm sorry, yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. It is frustrating that as we continue to feel the economic hardships of the COVID pandemic, that we have to spend more money on Badlands litigation defense, but having said that, I will do what is needed to defend the city and the taxpayers and vote for the additional funding while I continue to work for a resolution. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you so much. And I understand Councilman Creer, or did you want to wait till I finish this to bring an item forward?
We're going to just bring item 26 forward.
So any other items beyond Councilman Creer's request on agenda item 26 to bring it forward? Okay. Mayor Protem, may I have a motion for the consent agenda then?
I will move to approve the consent agenda items eight through 42, except for item number 26.
Thank you very much. It's a motion. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries, and so now we'll go to agenda item 26, for possible action to approve a temporary beer wine cooler off-sale license for LSD, Inc., DBA LSD, Inc., at 2401 West Bananda Suite Q, Ward 5. Councilman Creer.
Thank you. I'm not sure if Peter's going to introduce the item or whatever.
Sure, Councilman. Through you, Madam Mayor, Peter Lowenstein, Deputy Planning Director. So the item before you is for a temporary license to allow beer wine cooler off-sale use to operate inside the convenience store slash laundromat scenario. The use permit, the special use permit, was previously approved in July of this year, and the business has been operating under an administrative 90-day temporary license since the beginning of August, while the suitability analysis of, for the principal owners is completed.
Okay. So back to you, Councilman.
Thank you. I'm not sure if the applicant is, is here. We just haven't, I might want to come up, sir. And the reason we're pulling this is that we just didn't know anything about it, about what's going on. It's a laundromat, it's a mini-mart, next to you. Introduce yourself. Yeah, right there at the microphone.
I'm Reno DeVito. How are you?
How are you? Could you spell your last name, please?
D-E-V-I-T-O.
Thank you.
Okay, and, and, you know, normally wouldn't have this conversation at council, but I need a better understanding of exactly what it is that you're doing with that, with that property. I mean, it's old property, we've been there a long time, and we need to understand exactly what you're doing.
Sure. So it was previously a laundromat, and when we first got it, we wanted to turn it into the.
I want to pull the mic up.
A market and a convenience store for the community. We had, at one point, considered getting rid of the laundromat because we downsized it to be much smaller, and we have kept a small portion of it because that was what the community requested of us. A lot of people in that area, they don't have cars, so they walk, and they come from all directions, and they carry their baskets. So when I first talked about, you know, getting rid of that to expand the market larger, most of the people didn't want me to. So all we did was downsize the laundromat to be much smaller, and then we expanded the market in the front to try to keep everyone happy. So that's what I'm doing, and currently, we just kind of build the market bigger every month based on what people are asking for and what they want in the area.
Okay. And so people, if we, if we do this, you realize, I mean, people can't drink on-premise, correct?
Yeah, no, of course not. Anybody who purchases alcohol has to leave with it in a bag. We don't let anyone stay and hang out, and even most of the people in the laundromat, they come to do their wash, and they sit out front. We set up a table and chairs for people, so there's not so many people inside because of COVID and all that. But, yeah, we haven't had any issues, and as far as that goes, you know, if somebody, we tell everybody, if you're going to stay, you can't open it, and then most people who are going to do their laundry, I would just tell them to purchase it on their way out.
And what are you doing now to ensure that people are not standing outside drinking?
I have three partners, and one of us is there usually at all times. We have, you know, our two newest employees have been trained, obviously, if they see anybody doing such, something like that, we would just ask them to leave. They have to be a thousand. They have to be a thousand feet away, so most people just take their stuff and they walk back to wherever they're going. As of yet, I have not had that issue. I just tell people ahead of time, like, hey, you can't open it, you know, until you're gone.
Okay. One of the things that we've done is that we have not allowed single sales of alcohol, and that would be a condition that we would want to put on the license, because we've had a lot of issues in the past with the restaurant in front of you, which is closed, with other areas. And so we would want to put that condition on there. And I'm not sure if Peter wants to read it into the record. And if you're, if you're okay with that, then we will.
It's very difficult for me to hear you. You said the condition.
Single sales. Are you familiar with single sales? So we would put a condition on the license that there would be no single sales sold. We have a number of our C-stores around the area follow that. And that, we've had some issues in that area over the years with people loitering out front, drinking, and we can't have that. So Peter's going to read in a condition, and if you're okay with that, then we can vote for it.
Yes, please. You may.
I can talk to you about it? Oh. The single sales is the largest portion of our sales because the area, it's not affordable for them to necessarily buy anything else. So most of the stuff we sell is a single sale.
Right.
Because it's within the price point of the community. So I don't know how that would work well for us as far as that goes.
Right. And like I said, you know, we've had concerns, issues with that market there, and we would have to put that condition on there to approve the license.
I mean, that's, that's fine. That's just, I don't know what else to say. That's just kind of how it's set up. I haven't had any issues. The community's been really nice. We've actually, everybody in the area has always complied with anything we said. So I don't know about the past, because I'm new to the area, only about a year in that community. But we've had, you know, it's been really good. There hasn't, there hasn't been any problems for us.
Good. We have some questions.
So I can understand your.
Sure.
Would you entertain some questions?
Oh, without a doubt, sure.
Certainly, Councilwoman.
Madam Mayor, Councilman Creer, this is your ward, but would it be possible to maybe, like, maybe do like a trial of six months to, like, not put a single sales and maybe have a comeback and look at to see if there was any problems?
Yeah, that's a very good suggestion. Now, one of the challenges that we've had, and this is mostly in wards 1, 3, and 5, we've had extensive discussions over the past few months about this and trying to find a fair and equitable way to work with businesses so that they, they don't have this on. There are a number of C-stores in the, in the area that have a single sales condition on. Some are trying to take them off, some are fine with it. And it's a challenge to try to find something that is, that is harmonious. Believe me, we've been meeting with Director Summerfield and our planning department just in the past couple of weeks about it, and it's, it's tough. But we have to ensure, and like I said, we've had some challenges in that area. I mean, I was driving past that area for my entire life.
It's a tough area.
Yeah.
Councilman, could I add to that, too? I concur with Councilwoman Fury, and would like to see it, perhaps, and not to tell you how to spend your money, but a lot of signage around if, in fact, this is the proposal that says no drinking on property, single sales, whatever you do, but even in the parking lot.
Okay. That would be fine.
You know, we've had a number, I mean, some of the C-stores have extensive security plans in place, which, which you do not have, and I don't think you've reached a point where you've warranted us to go there on that. But there have been some challenges, and I'm not trying to work against you. I'm really not.
Yeah, no, the city's been so helpful to us this whole time, especially with everything going on.
Yeah. I'm not sure if there's a way to craft it, because you are under a temporary now, and then if we did it and did it under a one-year review, then that still wouldn't have that condition on it. Because you want to have, you don't want the condition on it, I'm hearing.
Could I ask Mr. Dorkak on that legally?
Yeah, Jeff Dorkak, Deputy City Attorney. I'll also defer to Peter. Peter, what was the language of the condition you have? And I'm sure you can weigh in on whether or not we can attach it to this temporary. I, I'm thinking we've done that in the past.
Okay. Through you, Madam Mayor. So the condition would read, if applied, would be the sales of individual containers of any size beer, wine coolers, or screw-cap wine shall be prohibited. That condition would be placed on the business license. This is on the temporary business license, which eventually will then be made into a permanent license status after suitability has been completed. There is the opportunity, I imagine, to do a trial run through this temporary and prior to the issuance of the permanent. If any issues have come up, then this could be placed on the permanent license. That is an additional option for you.
That's fine. We can do that.
So let me just be clear. So are we going to let him sell single, single drinks, and then in a year, if there was any problems, then take it away? Or are we just taking it away right now?
So without the placement of the condition, he can sell single sales. The temporary license runs for an additional duration of time before the license is made permanent, so the discussion can be re-had. At the time, the license is up to be made into a permanent license if that condition will be placed on to the license.
Great. So we'll, yeah, okay. So we'll give him the benefit of the doubt, right?
Yeah, and then he'll give us more time to evaluate, which is, which is fine. So we'll, we'll move forward, and then we'll review it in another six months and see if we had any issues with it.
That sounds fantastic.
All right. So with that said, then, there will be no additional conditions put on this. We'll just move for approval of this, of item 26, correct, Peter?
That is correct, Councilman.
Okay. With, but we need to add with, I guess, an additional six-month review. Or would that automatically happen, because he's going to come in front of us for the permanent license?
It's my understanding that the permanent license will have an additional review.
Okay. Great.
Jeff Dorkak, Deputy City Attorney, correct. That's all right, that it's all correct, what Peter said. So no condition on the temporary, and they'll be back before the permanent can have a review.
And can you do me a favor also? Because if you can reach out to our office closer to this and make an appointment, we can meet privately to discuss this, just so that we, you know, this, we wouldn't want to do that so that we can necessarily have an idea of where you are with it.
Sure. That would be great.
Yeah, just stay in touch with us.
Yeah.
We'd love to hear from you.
Kelly, I call.
Kelly.
Yeah, okay.
And I just want to remind you, I mean, really communicating to the public is so important. So for them to understand that you'll lose your ability to have your business if they violate it. And, you know, we get all ages trying to do silly things.
Right.
And your partners, too, when they're on duty, to keep an eye on the parking lot, as well as the laundromat part, you know? Where they've got some bag or something.
Right, yeah. We do try our best, obviously, even now, because it's, they don't, not everybody listens, but we're really strict about it. You know, I don't want to see it anywhere around, and even with just people who'll sometimes just walk into your store with a cigarette. We're like, you know, what are you doing? You can't do that. And it's always, we're just really strict about all of those things.
Good. Wish you the best.
We were well aware of this in the beginning to, like.
Yes.
Keep everybody under control.
Your motion is up, yes.
Okay, so please vote and please post.
Thank you.
And good luck.
Thank you so much.
The motion carries. Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you.
Councilwoman, good job. Okay, we'll move on. 43. Agenda item 43, is that where we are? Yep. Okay. Public hearing regarding the fair market value of city-owned vacant real property located at northwest corner of Industrial Road in West Wyoming in anticipation of the sale of the vacant real property on an internet auction website, Ward 3. Councilwoman Diaz, note, this item's related to item 49, R4A2020. And shall I read 49 as well, or no?
Certainly.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You've been busy.
I'm sorry?
I said you've been very busy. Okay, agenda item 49 is resolutions, R482020, discussion for possible action regarding a resolution declaring the City of Las Vegas intention to sell real property on internet auction website located northwest corner Industrial and West Wyoming Avenue, Ward 3, with Councilwoman Diaz. Note, the item is related to 42. So, good morning.
Cherry Walker, Director of Operations and Maintenance. Item 43 establishes the appraised value of 4.135 million for an assemblies of five parcels as the fair market value of those five parcels. We intend to put those up for internet auction, and so this will establish that as the value. And then item 49 gives the resolution directing us to proceed with the internet auction.
Thank you very much. Any comments from council? Councilwoman?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And I just think it's appropriate, Mr. Walker, if you can clarify for those that are tuning in and are here, once the auction goes through and the property is sold, what happens to those funds?
The money was bought with RTC funding as part of the project NEON, and so a certain proportion will go back to direct city allocation from those funds and be available for future projects. The larger proportion of it was bought with some federal funding, and that will be available for submittal on our behalf.
And therefore, if I might interrupt, because it's a public hearing, is anyone here who would like to come up and make comment on either 43 or 49? Anyone online, please?
No.
No? Okay. Back to you, Councilwoman, please proceed. Let's do them one at a time.
And with that, Madam Mayor, I move to approve agenda item 43.
Thank you. There's a motion to, what? We don't need a motion on 49?
43.
On 43.
You don't need a motion on 43, just 49.
Okay. So I'll amend my motion to move to approve agenda item 49.
Thank you very much. There's a motion. Please vote and please post.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you very much, Mr. Walker. Number 46, discussion for possible action regarding activating and operating a temporary program, of which fines for qualifying parking infractions may continue to be paid by means of a donation of children's toys in lieu of payment of money pursuant to LVMC, 11.10.150, all wards. And, good morning.
Good morning, Madam Mayor, members of City Council, Bill Arnt, Director, Economic and Urban Development. This item is to activate and operate our temporary program to allow toy donations to be submitted to the City of Las Vegas in lieu of paying a parking fine or citation with cash. This program was adopted by the City Council on July 18th of 2016 by ordinance. This year's programs would allow for any qualifying citation meeting any citation that excludes public safety or handicap violations, and is issued between October 15th and November 15th of this year to be eligible for the program. The way the program works is, in lieu of paying the fine, a like-value item, a toy, that must be unwrapped and nonviolent and equal or greater value than the fine, be submitted to the City of Las Vegas and our parking services team and accompanied by a receipt. And then those donations must be received by December 15th of this year. The financial impact to the city is negligible. Last year, we did collect donations in an approximate amount of $830. This year's recipient of toys would be Help of Southern Nevada. Help of Southern Nevada's impact and presence in Las Vegas has been felt throughout the local homeless community over the last 50 years. Help's mission is to assist families and individuals throughout Southern Nevada to overcome barriers and attain self-sufficiency through direct services, training, and referral to community resources. We recommend approval, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
A couple. You did mention a receipt must accompany, not their own handwritten, but the store receipt. And do you want them delivered wrapped or unwrapped?
The store receipt should accompany the toy. They should be unwrapped to make sure it's a safe item, and they can be delivered to our parking services team. And I would note, in years past, we have such great residents in Las Vegas, we have received donations even without citations, and so we appreciate all of our residents that want to participate and support this worthwhile cause.
And they dropped them off where?
At our parking services office, which is at the base of the parking garage in Symphony Park on the east side of the Smith Center for the Performing Arts.
Okay, the east side, you don't know. We don't have a number.
I don't have the address in front of me.
Is there an office there? And then, I'm sorry to complicate this, but I follow directions very well, but I hate running around looking for what I'm supposed to be doing. Which side of the building, the parking garage, and is it on the first floor?
Our.
And is there a parking space?
It can be delivered to 500 South Main, which is our call center, and then our parking services office is open also. So either location, they can submit the donation.
Thank you, and hopefully don't get a ticket.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. This, would, please make a motion. Let's have a motion.
Move for approval.
Thank you very much. All in favor, please vote. And for negative, whichever motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Arnt.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll move on to agenda item 47. We are now going to hear related items, 47, 48, together, but will take separate motions. I'll read them for the record first. Number 47, discussion for possible action regarding review of conditions. Number one, the hours of operation shall be limited to 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM. And condition number six, a city and state licensed security company approved under NRS 648 must be contracted to provide security services at all times the business is open for a nonprofit club general on-sales license. And related, item number 48, discussion for possible action regarding review of conditions. Number one, quote, "The hours of operation shall be limited to 8:00 AM to 11:00 PM." And condition number six, a city and state licensed security company approved under NRS 648 must be contracted to provide security services at all times the business is open for a banquet or event establishment liquor license for Elks Lodge, 1508 IBPOE of W, Inc., DBA Elks, Perrin Lodge, number 1508, 600 West Owens Avenue, Ward 6. And so, and Councilman Creer's, good morning. Starting with you, is this a public hearing, too?
Public.
No? Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Peter Lowenstein, Deputy Planning Director, for the record. The applicant holds two liquor licenses, a nonprofit club general on-sale liquor license and a banquet or event establishment liquor license. The business has City Council conditions placed on the license as a result of a disciplinary complaint that was heard on September of 2018. The applicant has requested a review of condition on number one and number six of the conditions, which affect the hours of the operation of the business, as well as the type of security that must be present at the site during the operations respectively. Staff has prepared proposed condition language with concurrence of the Metropolitan Police Department, and staff will make its recommendation once the council has heard from the applicant. Thank you.
Good morning, gentlemen. How are you?
Welcome, morning.
Good morning.
And I hate to ask you if you could step a little further apart so you don't have any germs on each other, and then, so we can hear you clearly if you take your mask off, it's so muffled and I can't understand. Thank you.
All right.
And asking you each to repeat your names, we've seen you before, and welcome you back.
Good morning, Mayor, Councilwomen and men, and staff. My name's Charles Barber. I live at 1605 Cali Montevere, Las Vegas, 89117. My reason here today is to try to see if we can come before council to change our hours from 8:00 AM to 11:00. It's just not conducive with our business. We're asking that we get to change from 1:00 PM in the afternoon to 2:00 AM in the morning. It doesn't change the number of hours that we're open, but business-wise, the 8:00 AM doesn't work. We're required to have security on staff at all times when we're open. We don't get any business till, like, 4:30, 5 o'clock in the afternoon, so the hours are just not working for us at this time. I also put together to show I also put together to show what's happening in West Las Vegas. If you look, he has a package that's being passed out to you. And I did some research and went back. Since nineteen eighty-two, we've had some sixty-three businesses closed in the West Las Vegas area. And you'll see that some of these businesses, some of them had gaming, some of them had liquor, various different types of stores and markets. But this is what's happening with our West Las Vegas area. Now, to me, that gives me some impressions that we've got something really wrong as far as what's happening and the type of licenses that were lost during that period of time. We've been in business in the West Las Vegas area since nineteen fifty-three. We had a name change in nineteen fifty-four from Silver State Lodge to Elks Lodge number fifteen oh eight of the IBPOE of W, Inc. But my concerns is that there's something really wrong here, you know? Now, we were here before the body in twenty eighteen. We had gaming, we lost our gaming, and I have documentation in here to show that our gaming was taken and it should not have been. But I'll get to that later in the package. Our next item was-- in the process, due to the hire change and us being closed for the six months, we lost our building. Our building went into foreclosure because we were closing when they were generating funds in order to make the mortgage payments on the building. We'd been in that building since nineteen ninety-two. My predecessors had signed a bad deal as far as the mortgage was being signed, and we were paying some seventeen percent interest. We were never paid for the building. But in interim, we were paid for that building twice, but due to the financial status that we were put into, our building was foreclosed on and sold off in interest. In that process, I had filed a lien against the property due to the money that had been put into the building for the kitchen and all of the repairs that were done, the new tile floors, the bathroom upgrades, the bar, the bar upgrade. I lost some fifty-some thousand dollars out of money that was spent out of pocket to do all these repairs. And I went before an attorney and had an attorney to do the paperwork as far as has a lien been placed on the building prior to the sale. Nothing ever happened with the lien. The building was sold without any incompetence at all against the building. So you'll see in the package that the attorney that I utilized who filed the lien to try to stop the sale, to no avail. Our gaming license was taken from us during the same period. And at the time, we had an attorney, we had an attorney that was, that we had hired to represent the lodge, and she failed to do what was necessary for us to pursue this So the lien was never acted on. Then, we also had, if you look at the last portion of this, the Nevada taxation, the city had gone, I guess, to taxation and found that we had a lien against the property for some forty-three thousand, three hundred and twenty dollars and seventy-two cents. But in June of twenty eighteen, I paid this off in its entirety. I have the lien release, I have the notice of delinquent taxes, but all of it's here. Our license was taken from us, our attorney failed to act on this portion of it as well. So what I'm going to do, everything is in there, the lien release from the state is here, and the clear title of the lien, the lien release. So I feel that we have been zelken injustice as far as being a nonprofit organization and being in the community for almost sixty years, that we're entitled to have some relief and be able to move forward with the new hours so that we can at least try to survive. We had some twenty-four employees prior to us being shut out. These people were shut out overnight, put out of work, and they've been out of work for the last two years. It's not, it's not justice. So I'm going to turn it over to the Exaltate Rule.
My name is Thomas Reynolds. I'm Exaltate Rule since January of this year. And like I said, in that package, I did provide a security plan that was updated. Also, a part of that deal was the twenty eighteen, twenty, condition they placed on us. Out of the twenty, we are only requesting two of them. That'd be the change hours and drop down the security, which would still be a private security, but we just need one armed security to work the night shift, which during the day shift, I just provide myself and another person to do security during the daytime and have one additional person at night to help the armed security out. And like I said, this has been going, we've been on this since twenty eighteen, and that's been over two, almost, a little over two years, even though this year, we got caught in a virus, and we've been shut down three times over that. It wasn't caused, we violated. It was caused, what the governor decided, we have to cut down the virus. Like something I'm doing, requesting that we extend those hours from one o'clock to two o'clock in the morning if we can. But like I said, our company, our profit is based on our patrons. And we, during that time, the patient, if they're not there at a certain time, we would automatically shut down because it wouldn't do no good to have security on, paying them, and no profits coming in. So I'm going to request the council to do, give us, extend those hours, and also, I'm going to get the throat, change the security on for us and help us out on that because the whole deal is based on the finance situation.
Just, I mean, it absolutely makes sense, and so I think this is a point, unless there are any questions. We're going to turn it over to Councilman Creer, but certainly questions?
Maybe I misunderstood. Did you say that this building was foreclosed upon?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so who owns the building now?
Well, it's, uh, turnkey properties.
So you guys don't own the building anymore?
No, we just, well, we found, we did get a lease to rent the building.
Okay, so it was foreclosed, and you guys are actually looking to rent it back?
No, we are renting it back right now.
You are renting it back?
Yes.
Okay, that's where I was confused. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions before I turn it over to Councilman Creer? Councilman, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Through you, Mr. Barber, Mr. Reynolds, one is, good to see you. You know, we had a conversation earlier regarding this. A couple things, though, I have very empathetic with what has happened with the lodge. I mean, the COVID has devastated a lot of businesses and I work with them, including my business, has been, you know, transformed and upside down overnight. And so I completely understand where you're coming from. The issues that you do address, though, aren't necessarily issues that the city has purview over, right? The city didn't take away your gaming license. That wasn't the city of Las Vegas. That was the gaming commission, and whomever your slot root operator was, there was a challenge there. And you, you guys don't mention all of the challenges that we faced to put you in a situation right now with these conditions. You know, you were selling memberships, which were not, which you weren't supposed to do. You had people who were not members of the lodge or guests of the lodge who were, who were, who were coming there. You continued to do it after our business license officers went out and said you couldn't do it again. You had security that was not, not even close to securing the situation. There's videotape of people walking around, the metal detectors. There are people that left a gun on the table, they moved the table, moved it back. Somebody was beaten up a number of times. And a lot of situations, there's on videotape, Metro had tremendous amount of incidents that they called for, to come over to the lodge. Metro would show up, you wouldn't let them in. There weren't key employees who were working at the building during times of operation, which by your license, you're supposed to have a key employee working there at all times of operations. You know, there's a situation, we saw people, somebody got their head beat in, and they were dragged down, there's blood trail along the way. And then, you know, one of the challenging parts, too, is that you guys have never taken ownership of any of those challenges. There's always been somebody else that, that was, that was against you for some reason. And I don't understand that part. And so I'm trying to find a way to say, how is it that you guys have shown that you've become a better citizen within the community? When you, when you've won, you want to even accept the responsibilities of all the things that have happened. It was a challenge, we asked you to put the security cameras in, there's a challenge for that. And so I would be willing to move the hours of operations up to midnight, eleven fifty-nine, but not to two AM. And then, there's, we cannot move off of the security plan because you guys have not shown that you'd be willing to follow the security plan and their license. And we need licensed security people there that are going to follow the law. Because before, you had people there that were, whomever they were, your cousin or your friend or somebody who was working security, that did not follow the law. So if, I'd be willing to accept that as a compromise instead of two AM to midnight or eleven fifty-nine, but not a compromise on the security plan.
Okay, on the security part, I wasn't on the security team at all. I was secretary there. But like I say, a lot of this stuff you was talking about was wiped out in twenty eighteen. Twenty nineteen, we had no conference as far as any security around that place. I haven't communicated with Metro Police Department. And as of there, I, they have a copy of information, I have, I had no, I couldn't copy what they gave me. But like I said, there was no really incidents around Perrin Lodge in twenty nineteen at all.
Okay. Well, a lot of that might be because of the fact that a security plan is in place to, so that there are no more incidents, and that's exactly what we needed to happen.
From, like I said, I would take, since I've been Exaltate Rule, I would take responsibility of securing the area. I would come in, work when I have to work, and with, like I say, we do have security that we are paying. I would like to reduce that down to one. And like I say, I'll take responsibility from this day forward of anything going around there with contact with Metro Police Department, which I do have contact with them already. And I have advised them to, if anything goes around the building, contact immediately. And I pop up, because I stay around the corner from it.
Yeah.
I would take that responsibility.
I appreciate that, but that is where we are. If you want to go to eleven fifty-nine, that's great, but I'm not willing to back off the security plan because I think it was vitally needed. So that's, that would be my suggestion.
Are we talking about having, beyond security, there are both, two at the same time?
Yes, the same security, the same security plan that has been in place would stay in place. And you can move your operations and you can go to eleven fifty-nine at night to midnight, but--
But like I say, we're paying, right now, we're paying security hours, twenty dollars an hour for both, or forty dollars a day, I mean, forty dollars an hour. And like I say, we don't make a kind of money to do that. That's why we were trying to reduce the hours for security and help some of my people come in and work.
Right. But like I said, the challenge is that when you guys had your people come in, they were not enforcing security.
Well, like I said--
And hence, that's why, and since you just took over, if you want to show, come back in a year after review and come back and say, look, we haven't had any incidents, things are happening, then great, under your leadership. But I can tell you that, under the previous leadership, that--
Well, you know, that's the problem. I can't go back where the previous administration did.
I understand that.
I'm trying to go where we, look up to the date now.
I understand.
And put it up.
I understand. But believe me, we've had so many incidents over the course, even in my short time of being on council. Not even talking about the incidents prior to me being on council, but even the short time when I was on council, there were so many incidents. And so I just can't see how, and get conscious to the community, that we would back off that security plan because then things potentially could go back to where they were before. And we can't, we can't do that. Well, great.
I'm not trying to do that.
Do it. Show it. And great, and you know, come back in a year and we can review those conditions.
Okay. When I spoke to you, you said that we hadn't had enough, you haven't had enough time to do accessibility.
Right. And plus, keep in mind, you were closed for six, seven months out of that time period. So there were, there was no activity whatsoever going on. So if you can't take that into consideration also, because you weren't open.
Well, I'm talking, I'm talking about the time they were open.
Okay.
We hadn't had, this year, we had no issues.
Okay.
Last year, like I say, I have, I have copies of the police report from twenty, from December twenty eighteen to December twenty nineteen. And on that documentation, there was no issues. So like I say, you bring stuff that happened in twenty eighteen, and like I say, the security that we had there is gone. The personnel we had that was working security is not there no more.
Yeah, I, I hear you. I understand.
So like I say, to me, it's kind of, it's kind of rough to have, you don't know, to bring old stuff up when we're trying to improve, improve the system by doing that. That can't go nowhere.
Yeah, well, no, that's not true, because you, it just takes more time to show that you're a good partner to the, to the residents and to the city, and that there aren't incidents. And it seems as though the security plan that we have in place is working because there have been less incidents, obviously, you know, you've been closed for six, seven months out of, out of the year. I still think that it needs to be in place.
Well, I'm not, like I say, I ain't too much to change the security part. I just want to reduce the personnel that's doing security.
Right. I don't think we can do that, just because there's been so many incidents.
Wait.
And I understand what you're saying. You're saying it didn't happen under my watch, but it still happened.
Well, like I said--
And it's, and it, and it happened numerous times. I mean, there's a, the list is long for the number of calls and incidents that happened there. You know, Metro put up cameras there, and I'm not sure whoever broke the cameras or the, there's just a lot.
Councilman, in twenty eighteen, after we were shut down, I set up a working plan with Metro that we met every Wednesday on a monthly basis. We met every, on the first Wednesday of every month. We met every month, so they were knowledgeable of everything that was going on with Perrin Elks Lodge. We had no incidents, not even one, that would require Metro to come in. Other than them coming in, when we first hired the new security team, and they were not knowledgeable, had to fill out the paperwork. So we got fined for them not being able to read the names legible on the signing sheet. City fined us some hundred and, what, nine eight dollars? Something in that name, some hundred and nine eight dollars, twice. You know, we have a lot of seniors that are coming that can't write very well, can't spell very well. So now that we've changed the system to where security takes their driver's license and prints their name and says their name is legible, we've corrected all of those issues. But it's kind of tough to pay for a business license like everybody else and you're not being able to conduct business in a properly owned. It's just not fair.
Mr. Barber, you know, you were told that you couldn't sell these membership cards. And according, and actually, that's according to your own charter. You have to be there with a guest. And you continued to sell them when you didn't. I know people, personally know people, that would come into the lodge as if it was, you were going to a tavern. They would just show up, and they would, whoever the lady who cooks and the wings on Friday or something like that, and they would go there, but they were not members, and they were not members of a guest. And they showed me the card, and they said I paid whatever amount of dollars for these membership cards. And so when you were, you were told that you couldn't do that by law, it's not me, by law, you couldn't do that, you guys continued to do it.
So, the constitution was provided for the city. Our Grand Lodge Constitution was provided for the city. Travis took that, Travis Moon City, let me take this off, I can't talk in this. Travis changed that, and one or two of the items on this, these twenty-some items that you guys govern us by, he did not have the authority-- guys govern us by, he did not have the authority to do that. That's in our books. We have the three different classifications of membership. It's in our constitution and bylaws. He did not have the authority to change our constitution and bylaws. They can only be done by the Grand Lodge. It is in the book. It lists the different classifications of membership. It was legal in what we did. That could only be changed by the Grand Lodge in session. It has to be submitted to our state, I mean, our Pacific State Association. It goes up the ladder to laws and revisions at the Grand Lodge. And at that time, any changes to that block book that he made the changes out of has to be done by the Grand Lodge. So it was legal in what we did.
Could I ask you a question, Councilman?
Yes.
I understand. I wasn't understanding for a while, but I understand, understand that you're dealing with legal, absolute law, enforceable issues. I'm wondering, because of COVID and the fact that they were closed and the fact that they've had income loss, is only a question. Could you move for a six-month rather than a year review to have them continue on as is? Let them come back in six months with a perfect record and then re-entertain both of these issues? Because to me, with not having been open and losing all that income and waiting a whole year is a very long time for them to get their feet under them. And the cost of security, you may not be able to work with that because security is what Metro says. But I was thinking with the explanation Mr. Barber just made about those membership cards, and there are obviously different kinds of cards is what I'm hearing, and they four have different value and you're allowed to do different things. Just a suggestion, could they have, keep the, as you are, as you wish, Councilman, as you have presented thus far, and just have a review in six months? And if you're absolutely clean and everything's great, then you come back into Councilman and re-request. You just, better, it's just like having children, you know it. You want to see the performance, you don't, you want to see the performance, you've done what mom and dad have said you do, and then you give them the permission.
Yep. I don't have a problem with the review. And I don't have a problem moving the hours of operations, but only until midnight. But if, if you want to do that, we, six-month review is fine with me. I just think you need some time behind you of operating and to show that you are following the rules and regulations of what happened. Because we had so many, I mean, our business license people came out and you guys didn't have the cameras, they weren't positioned, you had security, weren't there, you, you were still selling these cards, you just changed the color of the cards, you had one card, it was one color, then you said, well, I'm gonna change it to another color. That's not following the rules and regulations. And that's, and that's not showing good partnership. So if you want to do that, if you want to go to 11:59, the hours of operations, change them. And if you want to do a six-month review on the security plan, I would come back to council, then we can do that.
So what will be the, please hours?
Your hours would be from, if you wanted to change them from...
8:00 AM.
8:00 AM to, well, you can go from 8:00 AM to 11:59. You can go from...
Right now, we're, we're open from 2:00 to 11:00 at the moment.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to go from 1:00, 1:00 PM to 11:59 PM, then that's fine.
You're gaining one hour more, but at least you gained something.
I appreciate that. But like I said, for the call, we only use one card and that's the gold card. And that's our Grand Lodge membership card.
Mm-hmm.
So there's no green card at all?
Yeah, I don't, I don't know now what you're doing.
Well, I'm telling you.
Yeah, great. That's great. I mean, that's what you're supposed to follow. I mean, like I said, I know, personally know people, and I haven't heard it because of probably COVID, but I, but I, but I know people that have shown me the card, tell me how they got it, they purchased it, it was, and, and that's not subject to debate. Those are facts. I'm not saying you're doing it now, but that's how we got here. And I think we need to have some history and some context, understand that. So if you would like to do the six-month review and come back in six months, then we can definitely do that and change the hours of operation.
Okay, I appreciate that.
Great.
And I will, I will invite the whole panel to come to the lodge.
Great.
Wonderful.
I appreciate it, thanks.
Great. So we'll make a motion to approve item, we'll take 47. Would the time go on 47 or go on 49, Peter?
This is Jeff Dorick, Deputy City Attorney. It looks like the time, Peter, correct me if I'm wrong, is on both conditions, so we'll need to do it on 47 and 48, correct?
That's correct, it's on both items.
Okay, great. So we'll move, oh, well, okay, gotcha. We'll move for hours of operations to go from 1:00 PM until 11:59 PM. And then we'll, that'll be the only change in the conditions.
Okay, there's a motion on agenda, item 47. Please vote and please post. And that motion carries. So you have a whole extra hour of operation, at least it's a start. And then on agenda, item 48, Councilman?
Well, thank you. I move for approval with the conditions to go from hours of operations from 1:00 PM to 11:59 PM.
And is the condition, though, that this will have a six-month review?
With a six-month review, yes. On both items.
Well, I don't think that's necessarily an added condition. It's kind of a direction that there'd be a required review in six months for a request for a review of condition.
And everything else is status quo. The two, security at this point, but the end of six months, you can come back and try again?
Okay, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, okay. There's motion, please vote and please post. Motion carries. Thank you, Councilman. Thank you, gentlemen.
Hey, real quick, Madam Mayor, Mr. Reynolds and Mr. Barber, and do me a favor, let's not wait till the six months to start having a conversation about this. Let's, you know, stay in touch and have a conversation throughout the time period that we can, so that once we get to the six month, we'll know exactly where we are. I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
All of the Grand Lodge, the senators, the complement, on...
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, number 49 was combined with number 43, so we move on to agenda, item 50. And before I read it, could you please, Mr. Arnt, let us know where we are with the report on the Huntridge that came out of the public comment this morning? Put that on, just a report of some briefing, either on briefing or something, so we know what's happened. Because it dawned on me, he was correct. I hadn't heard in three, four weeks, where are we with the Huntridge information?
Certainly, Your Honor.
Thank you. Okay, let's do number 50. R492020, discussion for possible action regarding a resolution approving the cooperative grant agreement between the City of Las Vegas City and City Parkway 5, Inc., CPV, and providing for other matters properly related thereto for purposes of the development, construction, operation of the property located 2950 East Bonanza Road to be operated as Strong Start Academy at Wardell. Ratification of related actions by City, its officers and employees, and provide for other matters not to exceed $8,241,100 general capital project fund. This is Ward 3 with Councilwoman Diaz.
Thank you. Good morning again, Mayor, Members of City Council, Bill Arnt, Director, Economic and Urban Development. This item for you today is, actually, these two items are for a project in East Las Vegas at the corner of Wardell and Bonanza. And the project is for a new campus for a Strong Start Academy. And there were also, also plans for a health center, a federally qualified health center. This project is, is looking to move forward with a capital project. And then we're also working with other city departments, including YDSI and Community Services for securing the operators for those programs, and they will be competitively procured. So today, we're focusing on the capital project, and that's the reason why I'm presenting. Our offices helped arrange for some of the funding, including federal New Markets tax credits. And that's the nature of these items before you. So I'm going to describe very quickly the, the nature of the project and then explain the two agenda items and what we're doing here this morning. So this is an aerial map. I appreciate, I apologize for the clarity, it's not super clear, but you can see it's the northeastern corner of Wardell Street and East Bonanza Road. This is immediately across the street from our library campus that we also funded notably with federal New Market Tax Credits as well. Longtime residents may know this property as Ernie Craig and Terrace. The property is in a disadvantaged area that is looking for new investment, and so we're really delighted to bring this project to you this morning. This shows some statistics on what the household income has looked like in prior years. The years are a little dated, but this was pulled off a mapping tool for the New Markets Tax Credits program. And I'm showing you this slide to illustrate that the point of this program is to try to attract money, try to attract capital to invest in disadvantaged areas. And this area is certainly, while it's improving, it is in need of investment, and there are lower-income households and families that live in the area. This is a site plan showing that what's going to be built on the corner. You can see here the, essentially the landscaping around the perimeter of the building. And then a better shot is the next two slides, which show kind of the orientation, the layout, where the building will be positioned on the corner. We're not asking for your design approval, so we will, of course, come back to through the planning process and the entitlement process, so you get to take a look at, in more detail, at the design. But this is the preliminary design for the project, and it shows the orientation of the project on the site. This shows the layout for classrooms for the Strong Start Academy and for pre-K. And we've done a very good job, I believe, as a city, supporting pre-K and early childhood education through our Strong Start Academies. And so I appreciate YDSI and our own Dr. Lisa Morris Hibler for continuing that for our city residents. And this will be our next project for that. So there will be early childhood learning on this campus. There will also be a health center component, and this shows the layout of all those components. This is, again, is preliminary design, but it gives you a feel for the elevation. So it will look like a modern campus with classrooms and space for the health center component. Again, showing some of the materials that are intended to be used. And again, we will be coming back for you for design approval. The items today specifically are doing two things, and I appreciate you reading, and I believe you read both items into the record, correct?
No.
Items 50 and 51?
Let me read 51.
My apologies, I should have requested that at the outset. If you could read item 51 into the record, and then I can explain the nature of the second item as well.
Great, thank you. Agenda, item 51, R502020, discussion for possible action regarding a resolution approving and authorizing execution and delivery of transaction documents for allocation of New Market Tax Credits and NMTCs from Las Vegas Community Investment Corporation, LVCIC, to LVCIC sub-CDEX LLC to develop and construct and operate the Strong Start Academy at Wardell located 2950 East Bonanza, and ratification of related actions by the City of Las Vegas City, its officers and employees, and provide for other matters, Ward 3, Councilwoman Diaz.
Thank you, Your Honor. Again, Bill Arnt. So the, these two items go together because the first item is our funding without New Market Tax Credits. And then the second item is the complement of the additional funding with New Market Tax Credits. And we use this tool for last gap funding to make these projects work. And so item 50 is to approve the city to use funds that have already been reserved and allocated for the project to invest into the project together with a New Market Tax Credits loan. The two sources of funds are bonds from the city and CIP, Capital Improvement Project Funds. Those both are special purpose funds, so they're not general operating dollars of the city. The first one, bonds, is bonds that would be issued by the city but backed by and supported by YDSI and redevelopment education set-aside dollars, which go into education projects. And this, of course, is one. And then the CIP is funds left over from monies reserved in the 2018 budget by the redevelopment agency for projects in Sepia Park, Box Culver Project and other projects. And that project came in on, on time and on budget, and we had an excess of funds. So we're moving some of those funds over to finish that $8.2 million. But the project total is closer to $11 million. The amount of construction work that we need to move forward with now is $10,670,000. So the balance of that needed is $2,428,900, and that would be made by a New Market Tax Credit loan to the project. So we're taking New Market Tax Credits from Las Vegas Community Investment Corporation, which is an affiliate nonprofit of the city. We're selling those federal income tax credits to US Bank. US Bank then gives us cash, and we then make an interest-only forgivable loan into the project, and this makes the project work. It would allow the project to be fully funded and to move forward. Item, so item 50 approves moving the funds for the project. Item 51 is authorizing the city to enter into transaction documents. I want to just briefly summarize those transaction documents, and they are in the resolution and in your backup, and those documents are on file. There is a use agreement, there is a lease agreement, there is a memorandum of lease, there is a building construction agreement, there is a cooperative grant agreement between the City of Las Vegas and the lender, LVCIC. There is a reimbursement agreement, a reimbursement and compliance agreement, a construction and dispersing escrow agreement, a debarment certificate, and other related transaction documents. And these are all needed to facilitate the New Market Tax Credits loan to get the money into the project. I would also note on the record that some of these supporting documents, while they've been on file, we've had some recent revisions that have been requested by HUD, Department of Housing and Urban Development, as well as the Housing Authority, the Southern Nevada Regional Housing Authority. The land itself is owned by the Southern Nevada Regional Housing Authority, so they will be leasing the land to a nonprofit to structure the New Market Tax Credits. That nonprofit is Strong Start Academy Wardell. And then the city has a lease of the facility from that nonprofit to operate the facility. The lease itself, the sublease, initially, we were looking at a minimum of 30 years, but HUD and Housing Authority want to make sure that the city will stay in the transaction for a longer period of time, and we think that's in the best interest of the city as well. So we're increasing that amount from 30 years to 40 years. There's some other technical changes regarding a definition of leased property in the ground lease, a change to Section 5.3 in the ground lease, and a change to Section 6.1 referencing that change from 30 years to 40 years. And then that change for the sublease going from 30 years to 40 years falls through in not only the ground lease, which is the land lease from the Housing Authority, but also the lease of the facility, the, the sublease. So with those changes, we do recommend approval. These, again, the transaction documents are on file, and we're coordinating and working on a daily basis with both HUD and the Housing Authority to make sure they approve on the sign-off on all these documents. And the reason why they're so heavily involved is, as I mentioned earlier, this property had been used by the Housing Authority for housing. It was known as Ernie Craig and Terrace. Now we're repurposing a portion of the property for this very important project for the community. So we want to make sure our partners, HUD and the Housing Authority, support all of the documents. And so these are a lot of technical changes from their legal teams. So we're working diligently to move forward. But with your approval today and approval finally from HUD and from the Housing Authority, that will allow the project's construction to move forward. Again, we will be competitively soliciting the operator for the Strong Start Academy as well as the health center, and that will be a separate process, and we'll make sure that the operator has funds on hand to operate, so the operations would not cause the city to incur any expense. With that, I recommend approval of items 50 and 51, and I'd be glad to answer any questions you may have.
Before I ask council for their questions, opportunities on investments of 100,000 or 10-year projects. You said this, this undertaking is a 40-year. What happens at those junctures and what is the plan or the federal demand upon our community?
So Mayor, for this program, we're using the federal New Markets Tax Credits, and you're right, there is a time horizon on those credits. So the investor that's purchasing the credits, US Bank, wants to make sure that they can file an annual tax return, a federal income tax return, claiming the tax credit for a seven-year period. And so that's why they want to make sure at a minimum that there is a lease in place and operators in place for the facility to run for seven years. The city, of course, wants it to run for much longer, and we're lining up partners to do that. But US Bank's commitment will be that the funding is, is secure, so that operations at a minimum would be for seven years. And the commitment is on hand from US Bank. So with your approval and final sign-off from HUD and the Housing Authority, the funding will close, the money... will close, the money will be in the bank, it will be available for wiring to the contractor, and we'll move forward with construction of this very important project.
So does it have to renew, then, just continuously? Because you're guaranteed seven years, but...
Thank you, Mayor. Just for clarity, so with this approval, this will be the only and the final approval. So this will now allow them to claim it for seven years. U.S. Bank's money will be firm in the bank, ready to go, and so we won't have to come back each year over that seven-year period. There's only one approval needed from you as well as from the bank.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Arnt. Questions, anything from council? Yes, Councilman Knutson, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Arnt, I just want to say I think this is the most impactful thing the city can and is doing, and I'm really grateful that the city continues down this path. And for the work that you're doing, I wish I could understand it. I'll be very clear, I don't understand this, and everything you said sounds very smart, and I trust you, but this is very complicated transactions. I do understand the pre-K side of it. And so my request, while not directly related to this, is somewhat related, and it would be that in our next presentation with CCSD from Dr. Malich, if we're able to include some of the outcome data from our other Strong Start Academies, just so we can tie how much money we're investing in pre-K to the impact it's having on children in the City of Las Vegas. And I don't have any questions other than that one request. I'm just very, very, very grateful the city is moving in this direction. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Councilwoman Diaz, it's yours. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First and foremost, I'd like to thank you and your vision and your passion for education and wanting to ensure that there is access throughout our city to high-quality pre-K. And I know that as educators, that's always been a life passion of mine, is to make sure that we're extending that opportunity to everybody. So I want to thank you and all of the council who have been staying on this course. We know that Nevada ranks about eighth in the nation in terms of affording affordable pre-K to our community. And knowing in the legislature, it was really hard to advance on this front. I'm so happy that we're able to do our part here at the city to expand this much-needed access, because we know in local government that the greater the access to pre-K, that's return on investment. You are ensuring that that child is on a pathway forward and upward, because you're giving them that equal footing and start at an amazing educational career. So obviously, I'm super excited this is happening. I want to make sure that I thank Dr. Morris Hibler for all of her work on this front, Dr. Malich and her YDSI team, and of course, EUD's team in making all of the finagling of the financials so that this project could pencil. It couldn't be, like Councilman Knutson iterated, a bright spot right now in terms of moving forward and keeping our focus on the future and all of the kids that need this. So with that, I move to approve Agenda Item Number 50.
Thank you very much. There's a motion on Agenda Item 50. Please vote, and please post. Unanimous, thank you. And on 51?
I also move to approve Agenda Item 51.
Thank you very much. There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 51. And Councilwoman Diaz, you are so right. This is our future, and it begins at the beginning. So all these young people, they're going to get this opportunity, and with our Strong Start buses, everything we're doing is focusing on these young people that so desperately need it in our challenged areas, most especially. Thank you. And that motion carries.
Mayor, thank you, and I want to thank Dr. Tammy Malich and Angela Rose, who's on our team, and then also Scott Carter, Tara Anderson, and Eric Bourne, who helped with the New Markets Tax Credits. It was a big team effort. Also want to thank Kathy Thomas, who's helping on the Health Center side, and it really has been a team effort. It's a very important project, and I really support everyone on the team moving this forward.
It's wonderful. We do a great job at the city, at least we keep trying to. So thank you. Thank you, Mr.
Arnt.
Okay, let's move on to Agenda Item 52. Boards and Commissions. Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Reappointment of Bob Brier to Ward One Seat of Parks and Recreation Advisory Committee. And for those who don't know, Bob Brier is a twin, and his father was mayor of Las Vegas, very popular, and always shopped at Rancho and Charleston Smith's. So I saw him all the time. And so Mr. Brier was originally appointed to the Ward One seat in September 2017. He has the recommendation of the Parks and Recreation Director, is eligible, and wishes to continue to serve. And so Councilman Knutson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve.
Thank you. There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 52. Please vote, and please post. Unanimous. Good luck, Bob. And Number 53. Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Appointment of Nominee Reverend Kelsey A. West to Ward Five Community Member Seat, City Advisory Committee to the Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency. Reverend West qualifies for the vacant Category One seat, which is reserved for Ward Five Community Member who resides in or whose business address is located in Ward Five and/or is selected by the Ward Five Councilperson. So Councilman Creer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just want to move for approval. Just a good guy and good community servant, so thank you very much to Pastor West for serving our community.
Absolutely. Thank you very much. There's a motion, please approve, or please vote. Thank you, the motion carries. And we'll move on to Agenda Item 54. Discussion for Possible Action Regarding the Appointment and Nominee Jenna Wilcox-Lavin to Category F Educator or Community Leader Seat on the Citizen Advisory Committee to the Las Vegas Redevelopment Agency. Ms. Lavin qualifies for Category F seat, which is reserved for an educator or community leader working to benefit children who reside in the City of Las Vegas. She is eligible and wishes to be appointed. Councilman Knutson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve.
Thank you. Please vote, and please post. And that motion carries. Congratulations, Ms. Lavin. We'll move on to Agenda Item 55. Our Recommending Committee Bills Eligible for Adoption at This Meeting. Bill Number Z-2020-1. Councilman Anthony, would you like the bill read?
Yes, Mayor. Bill Number Z-2020-1, in ordinance to amend the official zoning map of the City of Las Vegas by changing the zoning designations of certain parcels of land to reflect and formalize rezoning applications previously approved by the City Council and to provide for other related matters. Move for approval.
There's a motion to approve Agenda Item 55. Please vote, please post. Motion carries. New bills. Items Number 56 and 57, Bills Number 2020-31, 2020-32, will be heard at the Recommending Committee Monday, October 19, 2020. City Attorney, would you please read those bills?
Yes, ma'am. Bill Number 2020-31, in ordinance to extend the boundaries of the city to particularly describe the land to be annexed, to make its inhabitants subject to the law's obligations and benefits of the city, and to provide further related matters. Bill Number 2020-32, in ordinance to prohibit the feeding of wildlife, animals, birds, waterfowl, and fowl within city parks, recreational facilities, and public plazas, and to provide further related matters.
Thank you very much. The new bills, 2020-31 and 2020-32, are assigned to the October 19, 2020 Recommending Committee Members, Councilman Anthony and Knutson, and Councilwoman Fiori. If any so designated or unable to attend, Clerk's Office will coordinate finding substitutes as necessary at my direction. You okay? Okay? Okay, thank you. And so we will now move on to... 58 has been stricken. So we're on to 59? Subject is 20-0130-EOT1. Public hearing, applicant, America Ishen, LLC owner. Comet LV LLC, for possible action on a land use entitlement project request for an eighth extension of time for a non-conforming liquor establishment tavern. Use at 600 Jackson Avenue, C2, General Commercial Zone, Ward Five. Councilman Creer. This is a public hearing. I declare it open. Is the applicant hello, or Representative present?
We are. Good morning, Madam Mayor, council members. My name is Tony Sless, address 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I am here on behalf of America Ishen, who is a judgment creditor in this matter. Along with me is Bruce Leslie. He is the court-appointed limited receiver for Comet LV, who is the property owner. Just a quick, high-level review of this site. You can see it's located at 600 Jackson. This is a unique site and a site with a lot of history. For a good 50-plus years or so, this site has at one time or another operated not only as a tavern, but also a casino. This site has some unusual characteristics to it in that the gaming and tavern on this site predate, pre-exist city code and state gaming. So it is unique in that this location can be a tavern and basically an unlimited casino. So it has some unique qualities to it. I represent American Ishen, who was in litigation with the property owner, Comet LV, with respect to some business dealings. In order to preserve the land use entitlements, the court appointed Mr. Bruce Leslie as the limited receiver to execute these land use applications on behalf of Comet LV, so that the creditors in this matter still have an opportunity, hopefully, to retain their investment moving forward and finding an operator. Some other key things to keep in mind is that last year, September, we went before state gaming for our one-day opening. They approved us. That is good until September of next year. During that hearing, the both the Gaming Commission and Control Board were very supportive of this application and us trying to find an operator to move forward, and we've been working with Mr. Leslie with respect to that. So hopefully, this application, what we're trying to do is tie the tavern use to the state gaming, which expires next September of 2021. We greatly appreciate Planning Staff's recommendation, and I'm more than happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lowenstein, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Peter Lowenstein, Deputy Planning Director for the Record. Staff finds that the applicant has demonstrated the quest for an extension of time is due to circumstances beyond the applicant's control. The health and safety and welfare of the public would not be jeopardized by the continuation of the liquor establishment tavern use at this location. In addition, the liquor establishment tavern use could play a key role in the revitalization of the Jackson Avenue as desired by the Hundred Plan. Staff therefore recommends approval of the extension of time with a one-year time limit. Thank you.
When was the first application? What year was that?
I believe around 2014 was the first time the request, if you're talking about the first extension of time?
Yes.
Yes.
2014?
Around 2014 or 2015.
Okay.
As the eighth extension of time, I would say 2012.
2012. Okay, thank you. Any comments you wish to make before I... No. Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone who wishes to be heard on Agenda Item 59? Please come forward. Anyone online? Yes. Okay.
Yes, ma'am. We have one item from Paul Robertson. He states, "My name is Paul Robertson, 11219 Cunningham Drive. I'm writing this email to voice my concern with placing another liquor store in the community when alcohol has poisoned this community since redlining began on the historic west side. I am voicing my stance on this as I oppose this request for an extension. We need to approve businesses who have the passion to progress this community forward and not continue to place temptation in the community, especially since the black community has such a high population of alcoholism. Best, Paul Robertson."
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Any comments from council? Okay, I'm going to close the public hearing and turn this over to Councilman Creer.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Look, we're somewhat in a quagmire situation. We want something to happen there. We need something to happen there. I wish something would happen there. We do not need to, you know, not extend this time, because we don't want it just to turn into another abandoned building with nothing of a hope to do something. So if you take something back to your clients, I'd appreciate you taking back to them and say, "Let's get on the ball," because we're moving forward. And on Jackson Avenue, we have a lot of plans, and we're doing stuff, and we want you to be a part of that. No need to respond. I'm going to make a motion for approval.
Thank you.
I'm going to help you out. Thank you.
Please, there's a motion, so please vote on the extension. Please post, and motion carries. Thank you. And it is true, the plans for the future are something else, so...
Yes.
They'll save money if they go ahead now.
Thank you.
Plus, we need jobs.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much. But let's move on to Agenda Item 60. Okay, 20-0147-EOT1. Public hearing, applicant-owner, Industrial Road 2440-2497. LLC for possible action, land use entitlement project request for a sixth extension of time for a non-conforming liquor establishment tavern. Use at 2476 Industrial Road and Industrial Zone, Ward Three. Councilwoman Diaz. This is a public hearing, which I declare open. Is the applicant or Representative present? Hi.
Good morning, Your Honor. Good morning. Good morning, Mr. Diaz. I should state my name?
Yes, please.
My name is Abraham Asil. I am the managing member of Clinical Capital, Industrial Road LLC, for the old Crazy Horse Two.
Oh.
I have been before you, Your Honor, some years back.
Right, yes.
We are requesting, we are requesting to be given the opportunity to rebuild this project, property removed and rebuilt it as presented, and it's under consideration and perhaps even, you know, preliminary approved for reconstruction of a new development. And meanwhile, we request kindly that this, the city favor us with an extension of a year to do this and retain the license, the right to the license, which we some years back paid, contributed to the city in an amount of $1.5 million to get that license.
Thank you very much. And you, sir?
Jim DeFiore, Business Consultant for Mr. Asil. And we're here to answer any questions that the council may have.
Okay, let me turn it over to Mr. Lowenstein first.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The applicant has demonstrated the quest for an extension of time due to economic hardship with the ability to have a new building in place for licensing over the next year. The health, safety, and welfare of the public would not be jeopardized by the continuation of the liquor establishment tavern use at this location, assuming it would be located within a new building that is code-compliant. Staff therefore recommends approval of the extension of time with a one-year time limit. Thank you.
And I do recall we did have issues, perhaps, with the safety of the building, but those have been fixed.
Madam Mayor, I would defer to the building official, but I believe those issues are ongoing.
Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Anyone wishing to make comment on Agenda Item 60, please come forward, state your name. Anyone coming in through the airwaves?
No, ma'am.
Okay. I'm going to close public hearing and turn it to council. Any questions or comments from council? None? Councilwoman Diaz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And as you have an amazing memory, yes, this, this business has been before us not too long ago. But much as you have stated throughout the course of this meeting, we are, you know, going through a financial crisis with a lot of our businesses, financial hardships. So I am going to extend my olive branch and say, in good faith, I'm going to give you this one-year window as an opportunity to make sure that you stay the course on the building, that it doesn't have any further code issues, and that you're going to make it into something productive and useful for our community. So that is my hope, and I will grant the extension of time. But if I don't see any movement in this next year, I'm not sure that we will continue this course down the road. So we need to see that you are going to stick to your words, and you're going to make this happen. Okay? So with that, I'll move to approve Agenda Item 60.
And could I make a request, Madam Councilwoman, that really make an effort to keep your property clean-looking? I drive down Industrial or Sammy Davis, and that Sahara Pass all the time. Live right around the corner and the other side of the tracks, and there's so much debris, and it really, we have so much traffic off Sahara that you really have somebody really keeping it clean and looking at it as well as it could. So I would just ask that as a plea.
Is there a way to have the... Are we consistently checking in, Mr. Lowenstein, in terms of code compliance? code compliance? And so what's your recommendation? I guess I'm returning to you.
Through you, Madam Mayor. We can do periodic visits to the site to make sure that the property is being well-maintained, and we would effectively do that through code enforcement.
And that, I would gather, would be Mike Jansen, Public Works, where we see, and Jerry Walker, the operations and maintenance and cleanup, correct, Mr. Cerrantes?
Mayor? Mayor, may I add something?
Yes.
Jim DiFiore. This morning, I was out there visiting the site before council meeting, and the graffiti on the buildings has been cleared up. So there's no graffiti. There are homeless camps in the property to the south of this property, which is owned by NDOT, and we have been in touch with NDOT probably once every quarter to help, get their assistance to help clean up the homeless camps on their property. And I noticed that there are homeless camps today, so I will be calling NDOT after this meeting.
Okay. I know, and I defer here to council and to Mr. Cerrantes on it having spoken with Mike Jansen, who's currently head of Public Works, who is in scheduling processing with NDOT. So just to make sure, because I think the look is you, we have so much traffic there. And really, to keep it looking nice and that you have cleaned up the graffiti is great. And I know it's something, it's just unending and you have to inspect it all the time, but that's part of where we are today. And to keep things looking attractive, make it more appealing to the next owner.
Right.
I appreciate that. May I make a comment on that, Your Honor?
Yes.
May I make a comment?
Yes, please.
I just want to say.
If you would, either pull the microphone closer to you, or, there you go. Thank you.
Sorry, I have a healing problem. I apologize.
I thought you were listening to jazz.
Anyway, I just wanted to kindly request, if the city could help us, and that would go a long way, because you have the power and we don't. So you, so everyone understands, this property has the frontage and also the back. The back is, it's next to the railroad. And it is, the entire portion of our property in the back is a concrete wall. No one can penetrate it, no one can come over it. The front and the sides are both in front of Industrial Road and on the side, one north, which is a private property, and the one on the south is the underpass on the DOT. These vagrants and these homelesses come through that portion. This is where they congregate. We have wrote them letters, we have begged them, we have asked them to maintain it, clean it, and somehow do more in preventing these vagrants from coming in and cutting the wires on their side. That is where the penetration is, and we have no power. The only thing we do is we constantly send in crew to get the changed links, you know, woven back up and maintain and clean and do that. These graffiti's that have been put in, it's very recent, and we have cleaned them and we will continue to do our part. I'm just asking if it is in any way possible for the city, because you have a better voice than we do, because the DOT does not listen to us, does not respond to us, does not do anything. If there is anything on the city's side that could facilitate that, that would be, that would go a long way. I would certainly appreciate that.
I will certainly ask Mr. Cerrantes, if you would, to follow up on that.
Certainly, Mayor. We have a very good working relationship with NDOT's maintenance site. Mr. Walker coordinates these type of activities all the time between Metro and NDOT and other agencies. So we'll put on a list to coordinate and see if we can go out there and help with that.
And if you'd be kind enough, if you have a business card, if you could walk down around there and give it to Mr. Cerrantes. Business card. You'll take care of it. Great, all right. So let's, we're not done here at all, but let's turn it over to Councilman.
I'll just move to approve Agenda Item 60, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. And there's a motion, please vote and please post. Done. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, so we're now on to Agenda Item 62, which has been stricken, correct? 61 was stricken, excuse me. And 62 is to instruct the city clerk to set the public hearing dates and appeals from the city planning commission meetings, dangerous buildings, or nuisance litter abatement?
Will do, thank you.
Thank you very much. And now we're on to our second citizen participation. Citizen participation, public comment during this portion of the agenda must be limited to matters within the jurisdiction of the city council. No subject may be acted upon by the city council unless the subject is on the agenda and scheduled for action. If you wish to be heard, please come to the podium, give your name for the record. The amount of discussion on any single subject, as well as the amount of time any single speakers allow, may be limited. This is your opportunity to address council, but the council is not able to respond or engage in dialogue. Any members of the public wish to speak under this portion of the agenda? Good morning. We'll set this at two minutes, please.
Hello, my name is Tashika Lawson.
How are you, Tashika?
I'm doing fine. How are you?
Good.
I have a couple of issues. I did want to talk to the city about the demolition of the Greater New Jerusalem Church. We have actually held a couple of community meetings, including the church that is located right next to this church. And they would actually like to halt the demolition of this church and are wondering why we're moving forward with the demolition instead of having someone go in and consider doing other things there. I'd also like to address the three parks that are inside of the historic West Side that are currently closed to the children. These are the only parks in the historic West Side, and all three of them are closed. We have children who are playing in glass in the streets. If we can have people in different areas of town coming out to clean out, clean up the parks and, the mayor, you were donating money towards the, from the mayor's fund to the October 1st park. I think that we can, at the very least, try to get these parks open for kids in the area. They don't have any place to play, and it's one of the only places where you can see there's no hate on a playground. And these kids should be able to, you know, interact that way. And then the last thing right now is to talk about the lack of communication with the community residents, local stakeholders, and businesses regarding the, at our last couple of meetings for the Hundred Plan, we had a 300-page thing that was approved by the community, and it was gone through with UNOV. And the community feels that the Hundred Plan, as it currently is, is deviating from what was actually agreed upon. They would like to be able to see that. And I do know that we are currently having community meetings that are more current than two years.
Okay. Thank you very much. And please do be in touch with Councilman Creer's office on the parks. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Mayor and City Council. My name is Heidi Swank. I'm the Executive Director of the Nevada Preservation Foundation. Just wanted to come in and talk a little bit about the demolition of the We Kirk with the Heather this weekend. Because of the pandemic, we did not ask people to turn out. However, we did start a change.org petition. We thought that was a better way for folks to voice their input instead of being here in person. As of this morning, we have 827 signatures on that petition, and I'll be sending that into your staff. So the We Kirk with the Heather was an important historic resource in the city of Las Vegas. It was historic, not just because the structure was 95 years old, but also because it was the oldest continually operating wedding chapel in the wedding industry capital of the United States, our lovely city. It was constructed also of adobe, which is actually pretty amazing, because that's basically taking mud, mixing it with straw, and making a house out of it. We also know that the owners of the We Kirk with the Heather did not have a demolition permit when they tore down the 1925 adobe structure. If the We Kirk had gone through the regular process for getting a demolition permit, though, it's likely that the same demolition would have resulted, except that we would have had the historic preservation officer come out and take photos of the building prior to demolition. Now, there's no blame in this. Clearly, this went ahead without city approval, but this is also the process for demolition in the city of Las Vegas. So Nevada Preservation is asking for a change in how demolitions work in the city. We're not asking for no demolitions. We're only asking that we take a look at them, because we know that no demolitions is not good planning and it is not good historic preservation. So what would a demolition review ordinance do? A 60-day demolition review of buildings that are over 40 years old would allow the Historic Preservation Commission and historic preservation organizations to provide expertise, evaluate the building, and decide if it has historic merit. It allows experts in historic buildings to give the situation one more look and see if it can be sorted out. So for example, in this case, our architectural historian could have provided support on the stabilization and possible moving of an adobe structure. Now, I want to stress that a demolition review does not and should not stop all demolitions. It gives the owner access to expertise they may not otherwise have and provides the HPC, historic organizations, and the public the opportunity to weigh in on buildings that are cornerstones in our communities.
Thank you.
And we'd be happy to work with you on that ordinance.
And I'm sure we accept help.
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was very sad to read about and to see in the paper, because, I mean, having been here for over 50 years myself, that's part of our landscape.
Our population was 2,000 people at that time. Yeah. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Hello. My name is Amber O'Connor, Madam Mayor and the Council. This is my first time attending one of these, so the window for public comments passed me by on a couple of line items, but I did just have a question about 43 and 49, because it says there's going to be.
Did you mention your name? I'm so sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. Amber O'Connor.
And if you could start her back at two minutes. Thank you, Amber O'Connor. Thank you.
So for Items 43 and 49 that were just passed today, it mentions that there will be an internet auction, but it doesn't have a date or anything like that. Is it going to be in December or?
Mr. Adams, can you respond? Even though we don't respond the auction, and let's stop our time from moving. When and where? How does one find out on 49?
Yeah, is it like?
The auction. Online. So how do they know where and when? Where does that person go, Ms. O'Connor?
Mayor, this is what I said a while ago. I can probably address it. It goes through our real estate group. It hasn't been scheduled yet. This is the first step to get permission to place it on there, so we'll be trying to schedule it on there. Usually, there's some sort of public notification on when it's on there, so we'll research what that public notification is, but it hasn't been scheduled yet.
Okay, yeah, because I did see that it's not on the website yet, so it's going to be posted on the website beforehand?
It will, once it gets scheduled.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And then, so for Item 57, with the feeding of wildlife at city parks?
Yes.
So that one was passed, correct? To not allow it? I missed that, but.
No.
Or no, that was not passed?
What happened?
Oh, it's, it is a new bill.
It will go on later. That will be back on the agenda when? When? Recommending on Monday, on the 19th. We will be here, recommending meets here at 10:00 in the morning on the 19th, so if you have comments, the recommending committee will hear them.
Okay, yeah, because I just had a follow-up question with that one of if that one is passed, then like, would people be issued citations? Like, what would be the enforcement of that?
You're probably right. I'm not quite sure in how many and what they're, how they're going to draft that.
Okay.
So it's up in front of us now for that purpose.
Okay. So you said that one was resuming on the 19th at 10:00 AM?
At 10:00 in chambers here.
Okay, thank you. And I guess my closing comment then would be about Item, I believe, 60? Yeah, so I was overhearing that the owner of the lot for Item 60 was asking for help from the city to help with the houseless citizens. And I would just like to, you know, just state as my personal opinion that I think that thinking about houseless citizens as something to be cleared away is never going to eliminate the problem. If we start looking at these people as people again, then maybe we can start looking at, you know, getting more shelters in place, more community places where they can go so that they will not be tempted to, you know, cause property damage elsewhere.
Right.
And I would just like to point out that there is a local, excuse me, a local effort now to set up stuff at the Moulin Rouge, to have that be a safe place where people can go, and, you know, there's no drugs allowed. And so if more initiatives like that would be fostered by the city, then business owners would be happier, I think.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. You did very well for your first time.
Yeah, thank you.
Please come forward.
Hello, this is Jose Gonzalez.
I'm Jeff Bracha.
We, we were scheduled to be here in front of you today in the morning, but we don't see us in the schedule. I don't know if there's a glitch on our.
I think it was Items 24 and 25, is what we're being told.
That, they were on the consent agenda, and that was Councilman Creer.
That was the items for the.
They were passed in the, in our consent agenda.
Is that for?
The distiller?
The distiller, yes.
Yes. That is correct.
It was approved?
Yes.
Thank you. Congratulations. Go through. Thank you.
Please, next, come forward. Think we recognize this person?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Brad Gerbick, volunteer, 9717 Camden Hills. I'm with Diane Seabrand. I understand, Mayor, that you requested an update on the Hunt Ridge Theater.
Yes.
And we have a pretty significant update. Last week, Diane and I participated in a telephone conference call with the hearing master appointed by the court to oversee the Hunt Ridge Theater and with Craig Burkett, the Deputy Attorney General, who represents SHPO, that's the State Historic Preservation Commission. And there is a deal now. And here's the way it's going to be sequenced. Jay Dapper has agreed to maintain the theater for 12 years in its historic condition, probably longer than that. He's agreed to new covenants that go with the theater that replace the covenants that Eli Mizrahi, the owner of the theater, inherited from the previous owner when he took over, excuse me, in 2000. So that deal needs to be approved by three different groups. Group number one is the city council, so in two weeks, you will have that on your agenda for approval. The next, we hope that the historic preservation office has a special meeting sometime between the city council meeting and October 28th, and they approve the deal. And if they approve the deal, Eli Mizrahi's debt to the state will be forgiven, and the theater will transfer to Jay Free and Clear. And then the final thing that would happen is Diane's got an item on the Historic Preservation Commission for October 28th. Assuming the signatures are on the deal, they can consider that, and if it's approved, that's the final link in the chain to close the Hunt Ridge Theater on December 28th. So if you have any questions, we'd be glad to answer.
Well, I'd like to mention today is former Councilman Bob Coffin's birthday. And since he's been so passionate about preserving the Hunt Ridge and the whole park circle, everything in there, the potential of this is wonderful. And so wonderful, I don't think we've ever had a response before that quickly to a public question. And so this is really wonderful, knowing as a volunteer how hard you've been working on this for so long. And Dr. Seabrand, this is just, hopefully, we'll all be down and doing the right thing and making sure this goes through. So thank you, Mr. Gerbick.
No worries. At the end of the day.
Any questions? Well, let's, any questions, comment?
I just want, you know, at the end of the day, the state will no longer have any involvement with the Hunt Ridge Theater. It will be the City of Las Vegas Historic Preservation Commission.
Oh, wonderful. Did you tell Heidi when she was here just now?
I did not. We, Diane and I just did this last week, and I didn't even know the question was coming up today and.
No, she wasn't on that. And Ms. Beasley, right here in the front row on your left, had asked a question in the first public hearing, that we haven't had a report in three weeks or something, whatever you said.
Nothing.
So, talk about how our city works. Nowhere else in the world do you get attention like this that quickly. So that's wonderful, and please thank Mr. Dapper and keep us posted so we know as things are signed and.
And maybe I can also mention that Councilwoman reached out to me regarding the sign for the We Kirk with the Heather, and I told her I would take charge of trying to get control of that. I talked to Diane, she's. I talked to Diane, she's already on it, and she's already spoken to the parties, and so we're going to continue to work that for you, Councilwoman.
Good call. Excellent. I forgot about the sign. Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hope you're enjoying nice, soft times.
Thank you.
Thank you. For those of you who are first-time tuners in, Mr. Gerbic, for centuries has been our head legal counsel. Not quite. Please come forward, sir. State your name for the record. And if you would, remove your hat. We would appreciate it. Thank you.
Clarence Alphatomas.
Morning.
Yeah, I came in last time on behalf of the homelessness of me or whatever. I ain't worried about me no more. Write it down. But I am worried about all these sports organizations getting money out of the city that's not helping the homeless. And they was, you know what I'm saying? Creating a fraud just to get a homeless signature. And these other people are just pulling money, just pulling money and not really helping. You know, when a homeless person step in and say, well, okay, I need this here. Well, yeah, okay, we'll get this here, sign this here, and come back three weeks later. I ain't understanding that because I did it several times and everybody's being helped, not per se, but it's like a game there. And these peoples is going in, destroying property because of their assignment, I guess. And so the property value go down and they buy the property, which I ain't got no problem with it, but if you ain't giving back to the community, you see what I'm saying? And these people that's on this hell run, it's bad. Terrible. There's no way these people's gonna ever recover, recover from that, that drug, that particular drug there. Period. And it need to be wiped out. And I do everything I can. I go down in the depths of hell through the sewer and pull the rat to get that drug canceled out of these people's life. And they have, and when you pull the findings, invest in hospitals, in Miller Hospital for these peoples because they, no way they can recover off that drug. And Jesus, they ain't gonna even wanna hear him. You see what I'm saying? That's a terrible drug. Mayor, I cried yesterday. That is a terrible drug. No one should be on them drugs like that now.
No, you're absolutely right.
And for them to sit up there and say, well, homeless is just hard to do. Bullcrap.
Thank you. We appreciate your coming down.
This got to be done.
Well, we are working on it.
Please.
Ms. Thomas is really, and Dr. Hibler, all of us are really concentrating especially on the issues of the mentally challenged. We're working on, just spoke to the head of corrections in Carson City just yesterday on this very subject, those who are severely drug addicted and those mentally challenged. So your words are very important and we appreciate your coming down.
And methadone-
Thank you.
Is another drug to keep them on drugs because it's not helping.
Well, we're working on it, sir, and we appreciate it. So keep helping people and keep being a part of our family.
Yes, ma'am, I am.
And thank you. Thank you, sir. Well, you're, no more. Never again. I mean, I never saw anything happen. You make a question, you ask us for consideration, and all of a sudden, there it is. You have every answer.
I'm in debt.
It's a miracle.
Fantastic. Well, I've got some other things that we can put on the list.
Okay, you have two minutes.
Like Neapolis.
Make your list.
I want to thank you for changing out the frayed flag in front of-
State your name, please.
So Daniel Braystead, resident of Las Vegas.
Sorry.
The, somebody replaced the frayed flag that was in front of the old library. I've been working on that for a month and a half. Someone went up there and lowered it at half-mast and it was still frayed. I don't understand. This list I've passed around has got some items on it that I don't know how to get into the system. Maybe the Nevada State Legislature. Sure. The first thing, we need to have something, do something with fires, grass fires in forests. We've been dealing that since caveman days. And I think that the Department of Agriculture should have a nationwide look for ideas. And I'm considering like, we make titanium out in Henderson, maybe some sort of a mesh, a titanium mesh that we could put up around buildings. The second item is child support regulations for, well, you have the one article here, but there's-
Would you give this to Mr. Servantes and get another one from him for the record? You have one for the record and one, too. Jorge, what? Please go ahead.
Okay. Yeah, when I, when I help out at Three Square and other places, I'm always wondering, what's, where's the dad that's involved in this? And I think we've got some deadbeat dads. And a deadbeat dad is somebody that could pay child support but doesn't. They have money for events, they have money for NASCAR, they have money for all this. I would like you, with your position with 1,000 mayors, is nationwide, have a network to shut these guys down. You can do it with LifeLock. Somebody found that I had a 70-cent expenditure in Florida on my credit card while I was in Denver. In other words, the network is there, but it wasn't there when original regulations were made to catch these deadbeats. So I'd like somebody to consider that. We need to do something about this public comment or open meeting laws. We're given two minutes, or I'm down to three, or three minutes. Allow us to come up and say, and take a half a minute to state our problem and our question. And the other minute and a half, somebody up here raises their hand on video and takes responsibility for getting a response. And last, I think we should pursue the pro bono. All the other states have a pro bono for patent work. That's where you get a brand-new patent attorney and he or she files the patent for an, a poor person and allows it go through. It's overseen, but we're one of the few states that doesn't have it. So as you talked, we have an inventor's meeting on the October 20th. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, and thank you. And as you turn around, the gentleman behind you happens to be our head attorney, and you might make the suggestion right there to Brian Scott. Introduce yourself and he could say, because he's been head of the Nevada State Bar as well as 1,000 other representations, but he might be able to tell you where that's happening already and what we can do.
That's two for two. Thank you, dear.
You're just miracle, ma'am. So thank you and thank you for sending these out. Okay. Now, do we have any E comments?
No, ma'am, we do not.
Okay, so we'll move on to agenda, item 64. Councilmember recognition. Comments made by individual city council members during this portion of the agenda will not be acted upon by the council unless the subject's on the agenda and is scheduled for action. I know there are always comments. This time, we're down at the end. Councilwoman Seaman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I want to remind folks that we have our Small Business Saturday, so any business in Ward Two that would like us to feature them, I'm asking you to contact our office. We feature you all over social media. We've been doing it since I was, I'm in office as the councilwoman, so I completely support businesses and ask that you contact us at 702-229-2420 or email us at ward2@lasvegasnevada.gov. We are back to our Movies in the Park. So we will be featuring Friday, October 9th, 6:30 to 9:30, our Movie in the Park. And Trunk or Treat will be showing Maleficent, and so we're pretty excited about that. So come out for Movie in the Park. Then we have some great animals up for adoption that we want to feature. And our first one is Dennis. He's about eight years old. He's a neutered male. He's about nine pounds and he is just adorable. Then we have Keno, a male neutered three-year-old cat. Archie, who is about a year old, 66 pounds, a neutered male. All of these dogs and cats can be adopted. We also have Juniper, a female, three years old, about eight pounds. And you can adopt them at our adoption department, and all you have to do is email adoptions@animalfoundation.com or you can phone 702-955-5901 or just go down to the Animal Foundation and look around for a pet that really needs a home. As always, my staff is available to help you with any needs that you have. And so you can call them on the main line, 702-229-2420, or email us at ward2@lasvegasnevada.gov. You can follow what we're doing in Ward Two on my social media as well as see our Business Saturdays, @VictoriaDSeaman, Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. Sounds like fun. I thought Halloween has been ordered to sort of cut back, but we can go to the movies and have popcorn.
Well, they will social distance and they will wear their masks and we'll get them some trunks free.
Thank you. All right, Councilman Creer, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. COVID testing, I'm partnering with the Southern Nevada Health District to provide free COVID-19 testing at Western High School this Thursday and Friday, October 8th and 9th, from 8:00 AM to noon. Do me a favor and share this information with your friends and neighbors. And once again, this is free and it's right in Ward Five. For more information, visit thesouthernnevadahealthdistrict.org or contact my office at 702-229-5443. And don't forget that October is Breast Cancer Awareness Month, and the Nevada Health Center's Mammo Van is coming to Ward Five on Friday, October 9th, at the Las Vegas Mini Grand Prix Family Front Center, which is located at 1401 North Rainbow Boulevard. COVID-19 precautions will be in place to keep us safe, and you must have a valid government-issued photo ID, current insurance if applicable, to schedule an appointment in advance, call Don't forget to get your testing. And fellas, wear your pink. I got on my pink today in recognition of October's Breast Cancer Awareness Month. In St. James, the Apostle Roman Catholic Church will host the annual Gospel Jazz Virtual Brunch Sunday, October 18th at 1:30 PM. This is their 17th year celebrating this event, and this year's celebration will continue virtually due to the coronavirus. There will be a silent auction, raffle prizes, and gift baskets. The community is invited to join the event by computer, iPad, or phone. If you don't know, St. James serves the community in a variety of ways, such as providing a food distribution program, preparing sack lunches for Catholic charities, preparing Thanksgiving and Christmas baskets, and much more. The contact person is the Chair of the Committee, Ms. Levon Lewis. So you can reach her at 702-528-0496. Or by email at stjames@sjtac.org to learn how you can get involved and support their tradition of giving. The Diva Program, Rosam Brooks, who runs Vegas Roots Garden, is partnering with Aetna to provide a four-month intervention for women of color diagnosed with type 2 diabetes. Our program includes meal plans, exercise plans, one-on-one coaching, group support, and healthy cooking classes. Classes are held on the first and third Saturday each month from 10:00 AM to 12:00 PM at the Nevada Partner, which is located at 690 West Lake Meek Boulevard in North Las Vegas. For more information, visit diabeteslv.com. And also with the Vegas Roots, they're going to host a family campout event in the garden on Saturday, October 17th and 18th, from 2:00 PM to 8:00 AM the next day. The address is 715 North Tonopah Drive. There will be scavenger hunt, campfire, movies, and more. To register in advance, visit eventbrite.com/e/annual-campout-in. And the garden tickets, that's a lot, but you can always contact our office at 702-229-5443 for more information. And once again, we're going to have another 100 Plan meeting. We've been in the community for years discussing where we are with the 100 Plan, and now we have the 100 Plan in action. We, many people say that I don't know how, but we have so many meetings to talk about the 100 Plan, and this is just one more. The NWCPE will host a Zoom virtual meeting to discuss the 100 Plan in action. Dr. Tammy Mallage, Director of Youth Development and Social Innovation, and Kathy Thomas Gibson, our Director of Office of Community Services, will be guest speakers. I'd like to thank the NWCPE for their involvement and interest in educating the public on the upcoming development in the historic West Side. The virtual meeting will take place on Saturday, October 17th, at 12:30 PM. To participate, go to www.zoom.us/join. Meeting ID, 912-88976012. And our annual Ward Five Community Forum is going to take place this year on Thursday, October 22nd, from 6:00 PM to 8:00 PM here in the city council chambers. I'll host this event along with city staff to update residents on the top Ward Five strategic priorities and much more. Topics include the 100 Plan, redevelopment, Ward Five Works, workforce development, our homeless efforts, economic development, public safety, the numerous road projects, and much more. There is limited seating in the council chambers, and participants may also participate virtually. So visit our webpage, lasvegasnevada.gov/wardfive, to register for in-person or virtual participation. And the Department of Youth Development and Social Innovation has stepped up to assist the Clark County School District with locating students who are enrolled but have not shown up to class. YDSI has been deputized as field agents to help CCSD with this effort. And YDSI employees will work on Thursdays from 8:00 to noon until further notice. Employees will canvass various schools within the City of Las Vegas until they have accounted for every student. They will also ensure every student has access to Wi-Fi and a Chromebook. The YDSI team has been making calls and knocking on doors to get updated information on their students, and I'm thankful for the city's involvement to help ensure our students have access to education. But don't forget, you can always sign up for our Ward Five newsletter at our website. Or you can always contact our office, 702-229-5443. Or you can always follow us on social media, on Twitter, at CedricCreer, Instagram, Councilman Creer, and Facebook, Councilman Cedric Creer. Thank you.
Wow. Busy.
Busy.
Okay. Mayor, let them go.
Thank you, Mayor. I have one item. If we could get the flyer up there. There you go. It's a movie in the park. It'll be in one of our newest parks in the City of Las Vegas, Tregona Hills Park, which is right up against the mountains on the west end of the valley. So it's going to be absolutely gorgeous up there. We're going to be showing Hocus Pocus on Friday, October 16th, at 6:00 PM. Movie starts when it gets dark, which will be fairly quick up there because the sun goes right behind the mountain. We're going to have popcorn and water. It's free, open to the public, so come on out and spend a great night sitting outside, watching a movie, and more importantly, getting to say hi and know your neighbors and let's talk about what's happening up in the west end of the valley. So Friday, October 16th, 6:00 PM. Look forward to seeing you there. That's it, Mayor.
And look at fingernails. That's the new style for women. Not me, but for many women, they have, look at those nails. Wow. Have a good time.
Thank you.
Okay. Councilwoman, we're going this way, so you're next. Okay.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. You know, with our holidays coming around, it is really important, our National Fire Prevention Week is this week, and it's that time of year where it's getting cool and we're lighting candles and we're putting Halloween decor outside and we're using old extension plugs and maybe we need to replace them so we don't start fires. So just be aware, it is National Fire Prevention Week, so as we move in with candles in your house, candles where there's carpet, just please be very cautious. Then we have our Halloween Ward Six Drive-Thru. It's going to be spectacular. It's going to be on Halloween from 5:00 to 7:00 through our Floyd Lamp Park. We are packing up the bags and making them beautiful with all really, really cool tasty candy and lots of surprises. So please join us for Halloween and pick up your treat. And I also have to tell you that our Northwest Area Command will be giving out candy as well, and so will Assemblyman Tom Roberts. So please join us at our Floyd Lamp Park to get your trick-or-treat bag, all of course with the governor's rules, and it'll be, it'll be spectacular. On a serious note, we are looking for Elisa Harris. She's 15 years old. She's a female. She's African-American. She's got black hair, brown eyes. She's about 5'8", 150 pounds. She was last seen around Russell and Boulder Highway. So please, if you know where Elisa is, please call Metro Police at 702-828-3111 or Nevada Childseekers at 702-458-7009. We are also looking for Crystal Stover. She's 15. She's 5'7", about 110 pounds. Reddish-brown hair, hazel eyes, Caucasian. She was last seen in Vegas. We don't know what she was wearing, but please, if you know where Crystal Stover is, call Metro at 702-828-3111. Metro at seven oh two eight two eight three one 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 and seven oh two four five eight seven zero zero nine. And again, a lot of folks only hear about troubles about our homeless, but I want to talk about our success with the Corridor of Hope and how hard everyone works there. Our success story with our homeless this week is Brittany Shirley Exum, who is thirty-four years old. She's a loving, protective parent of her three children, ages nine, eight, and two. When Mrs. Shirley first came into contact with the courtyard, she and her three children were living in a motel. She was facing multiple hardships and struggled to pay her rent monthly. She made contact with the courtyard staff for assistance. The team immediately met with her and assessed her needs. The team was informed by the client that she could only pay rent until May of two thousand nineteen. The team went to the property where she was residing to assist in paying for another two weeks. However, the property would not take the payment. The team informed her that they would work on finding bridge housing that would work for her, but they had a difficult time finding permanent or bridge housing due to the client's negative rental history. Eventually, the team was able to find a weekly apartment complex that was willing to house this family. The team later placed the family in flexible housing program. Ms. Shirley received case management with home visits, rental assistance, furniture, household items, food, transportation, and employment assistance. She was able to find a job that allowed her to work from home and eventually obtained employment and permanent housing in Portland, Oregon. Brittany Shirley Exum and family were in the city's flexible housing program for over a year, then successfully relocated to Portland, Oregon in August two thousand twenty. And that is my announcements, Madam Mayor.
Lovely, lovely. Okay, Councilman Knutson?
Thank you, Mayor, for allowing me to share a community event we're having in Las Vegas, Ward One. We are steadfast in our commitment to the residents that will be visiting and cleaning up every park in our ward. This allows us to meet neighbors in a socially distant way while also giving back to our local neighborhoods. Our fourth park cleanup will be with support from Get Outdoors Nevada on Saturday, October seventeenth, at Doc Romeo Park. As always, we'll have individually wrapped refreshments, equipment, and more for those attending. And you can RSVP by following the flyer on the screen. We've had a lot of people showing up at the park cleanups. It's been super fun. And as we enter into the fall season and holiday events start to pick up, my team and I are readily available and here to help. Feel free to contact us at wardone@lasvegasnevada.gov, or call us at two two nine two two nine nine. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilwoman Diaz, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And as you so eloquently noted, I want to wish un feliz cumpleaños al consejal Bob Coffin, my predecessor. So feliz cumpleaños. I know that once you're in the seat, you probably follow these meetings very closely because you get used to being in tune with everything that's happening in the city. So I hope you have a happy birthday and a wonderful day. I want to, again, shed light on our Community Navigators program that we are trying to connect our community with all the resources they may need in these very difficult times we're living. We help you connect to your kids, to a device or internet services, anything healthcare-related, food assistance, housing assistance, early childhood education-related, and workforce employment. So please jot down this number, seven oh two 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 nine five two seven seven. We have community navigators deployed in different parts of our city, and they're there to help you be walk-through essential services you need to help your family in these days. So don't be shy and give us a call, and we'll be there by your side, doing as much as we can to connect you to the resources you need. Next, I want to emphasize that the voting season is almost here, and I want to make sure, I received my sample ballot yesterday, so don't forget to do your research, know who you're supporting this cycle, and know that City Hall is a drop-off ballot location, so you may drop off your ballot here if you don't want to vote in person, because there will be in-person voting, and there's also the ability to send it back via mail. But for those of us that, City Hall is conveniently located for us, make sure you drop off your ballot here. And for any further information, you can contact the Election Department with the information that's right in front of you. We thought the census might be behind us, but actually, we have one more month to ensure that all of our residents get counted. They have extended the period, so I want to make sure that everyone knows and continues to help us outpace Reno, because I know Councilman Knutson and Councilman Creer, we do not want to wear Wolf Pack gear. We want them to wear Rebel gear. So please help us stay ahead in terms of that friendly competition, but more so in getting the resources we need to help our community moving forward in the next ten years. And I also want to emphasize that Share Village has a community job resource fair slated for October tenth, from nine AM to noon, and we know right now, some folks might be out of a job and really need one, so this is another helpful one, and it seems like they're partnering with Resorts World to bring employment opportunities to our community. So Share Village Two is at fifty North Twenty-first Street in Ward Three, and I hope that if you are in need, go and check out what is available to you. Last but not least, I am your councilwoman for Ward Three, so go ahead and either email us, wardthree@lasvegasnevada.gov, with any questions or things that you may need from our end, or follow us on Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram, at Olivia Diaz LV, for updates that we post about the work in our community. And I do want to just say thank you to our YDSI team that's doing amazing work. I had the opportunity to go canvass both in Ward Five and in Ward Three with the teams. We're going door-to-door. We're checking in on students that aren't connecting to their classrooms to make sure that they have the equipment or that they have the bandwidth to be and stay connected. And then we ran across a few cases where the students don't have the motivation, and we're trying to troubleshoot and make sure social workers are also assigned to help those youths. So they're doing the yeoman's work, pounding pavement, and I just wanted to say thank you for all of their efforts in making sure all of our kids have access to their classrooms this year, virtually.
Great. Lot of things happening and a lot of thank yous are due. Again, too, I want to wish you, Bob Coffin, just a great happy birthday many years to come. You were certainly a vocal and fun-filled councilperson to share the dais with, and I never knew what you were gonna say. I can't remember how many times I cut you off so you couldn't talk, but happy birthday to you. We love you. And also, a shout-out to Mason Van Howling, who we understand was down at the Golden Nugget with his wife for a night out, and a gentleman had a heart attack, and he provided the medical service to save that gentleman's life, get him into the hospital. And so, as you learn in school, everybody, or you go to your local YMCA, or you go to any place where you can get the medical training, it's very simple what you could do to help save a life and pressure on the heart. So Mason, congratulations to you. Well in advance, because now it's dark when we wake up, certainly. Soon it will be light again, which is so inspiring. November first is clock change. Get an extra hour of sleep Sunday night, I believe, as it goes on November first. Of course, our next city council's October twenty-first. We're having such a good time with dates. And tonight, for those of you who need to know what to do if you're eligible and registered to vote, the Vice President and the hopeful Vice President are having their debate at six o'clock, Kamala Harris and Vice President Pence. So that is something you should put on your calendar, especially as Councilwoman Diaz has just reminded everybody to vote. And so we are a very responsive city. I think we all love what we do, even in these hard times. We know how much more responsibility we need to take to keep our city moving forward, our small businesses supported. Mr. Adam Scott Adams has done a remarkable job with the funding that has been allocated by the federal government to us, taking care of our businesses and so many people. The Dieter Mess is still there. The Pooh mess is still there. They need to go ahead and get a revitalized software program fixed up because we're just in a stall. But no, we're sensitive. We hear your calls and appreciate what we can do and direct you and help you to sources that might be of benefit. But on a personal note, too, our congratulations to Jorge Cervantes and to Vince Amora. As we look to the future, we appreciate the past. If you don't remember history, it'll just serve to repeat it. So don't destroy history. Preserve it, appreciate it, and look for the good that's there that make us all better today because of what we've learned from the past. And so to our IT department, let me see, wave back there. Thank you very much for all your work, for all of our staff and the various departments, whether it's legal or our marshals, or our business, or our parks, everybody, our clerk's office, thank you very, very much, and my hat's off to our council. We are a bunch of very, very dedicated people and have a lot of interaction, which is healthy. Boring is flatlining, let me tell you, and we are not flatliners here. We're into it, and it makes us stronger for that. So thank you all for coming in, and we'll see you on October twenty-first. This council's adjourned.